I will call this meeting back to order and the pledge allegiance for tonight will be led by our superintendent Jorge Aguilar.
Thank you. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, and our broadcast statement will be by our student membership.
Thank you. This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded in its entirety and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will air Tuesday, December 22nd at 8:00 PM, and Monday, December 28th at noon, and also webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Given the opportunity to address the board through public comment, either by submitting comments which are posted on our website or by speaking during the meeting. Members of the public were also provided the opportunity to speak to the board during the meeting. Members of the public who wish to speak during the meeting submitted a speaker form by noon today and were sent a link to participate. When it is your turn to provide comment, we will call on you to provide comment orally. Your video will not be on. Please always limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is on the agenda, we will ask that you please defer your comments until your item comes up on the agenda.
Fantastic, thank you. Alright, item 4.3 Stellar Students. We have Juan and Roberto Alvarado, two brothers in second grade from John Cabrillo Elementary, and I believe Member Murawski will be leading us tonight.
My honor, thank you, Member Pritchett. Our stellar students for tonight are Juan and Roberto Alvarado from the Learning Hub program at John Cabrillo Elementary School. These two students follow all protocols and are always at their best behavior. Now, I'm not sure if we can, I don't know if they're on the screen, if we can get them on the screen. Yeah?
I see them, but it looks like they're muted.
Perfect. I just wanted to see if our, our audience at home could also see them, so. Thank you.
Hi.
So, hi. They make sure to get all their work done and are some of the leaders at John Cabrillo. They're even movie stars. They represented the school and the Learning Hub in a recently filmed media video. And how is that? Good? The teacher reports they really do a good job completing work and they seem to enjoy being in the Learning Hub and happy to be around other people. They're always prepared and smiling, well-mannered and respectful to their classmates and to the team leader, and they come in ready to learn and focus. Juan, Roberto, you guys rock. And thank you for being such great students. I, I want to ask you, how is the Learning Hub?
It's good. We made a gingerbread house today.
What's that?
Yeah, like today.
Wow, that's awesome. We would love to.
Okay, we're glad to get it.
We're going to get it.
And Member Murawski, while they, that, you may remember them, you mentioned this, but they will continue to appear on as many videos as we can.
Here's my gingerbread house.
Washing their hands.
Wow. Oh, that looks awesome. What a great craft. You did a great job.
And right here is a king. And these are mummies.
And what, and what grades are you guys in?
Second. And this is mine.
Wow. Oh, I love it. I love the design and the style. Oh, beautiful. Thank you for sharing those with us. I have a second grader also who loves gingerbread and we just made our house. I'm not going to show it to you, we don't have time, but thank you for, thank you for being such great students and thank you for showing us some of your crafts that you worked on today.
Thank you, Merry Christmas.
Aw, you two are adorable. And thank you for sharing your gingerbread house to us before you ate it.
I just did a popcorn. Like the popcorn is down here.
Does it want to say anything else?
Oh yeah, um, I draw a mug of dead bodies, so.
Oh my goodness.
Like, you want to see it?
Probably not the thing to say.
Like, I'll bring it.
No, 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 you don't need to show them. My second grader draws all kinds of stuff too, and it's, there's a lot of islands usually, so.
I'm putting my gingerbread house.
Yeah, sorry.
And this feels, the babes, right?
Thank you, Mom, for your support as well.
Yeah, thank you. They really enjoy the Learning Hub, so they, they're having lots of fun.
Awesome.
Amazing. Well, thank you both of you for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
And happy holidays to you.
Okay.
You too, bye.
Wait, can I show you one more thing?
Sure.
Um, this is the thing where, where we can just practice all the morning, so we can know how many days until Christmas. And my rip. So, so it's eight more days. Okay.
That's very cool. And you linked them all together, huh?
Yeah.
Very good. Bye. Take care. They were quite adorable. Alright, item 5.0, announcement of action taken in closed session.
None, none, president, pro tem.
Perfect. Item 6.0, agenda adoption. Can I get a motion? Thank you. I have a motion in a second. If you can raise your, do we need, we do not take roll call on this, right, Mr. Behrens?
No, we don't.
And student preferential vote?
Aye.
Perfect. And if you could just raise your hands of all in favor. Fantastic. Thank you so much. Alright, item 7.0. Here we go. Item 7.1 is a ceremonial oath of office given to newly elected board members. And so, we'll go one by one and then after each one, we'll give the board member an opportunity for a minute or two to say a few brief comments. So first on the list is Miss, Member Lavinia Grace Phillips. And you could tell us who will be swearing you in tonight? That'd be great.
My Uncle Joe Lynch is going to be swearing me in tonight. Very excited to have him do that.
Look at the smile. We have the same smile, Uncle Joe.
Okay, alright. We do, we do. Yes, well, congratulations to all of you and let, I will go ahead and begin, so it's not to belabor it. So, here we go. I, Lavinia Grace Phillips.
I, Lavinia Grace Phillips.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
Then I will support and defend.
Then I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter. Thank you. Congratulations, Member Phillips.
And I just, I just want to say I'm so excited to be here. And like I said earlier, this is going to be a journey and I'm excited to spend the next number of years with these wonderful group of people, so I am ready to go. Thank you. And thank you, Uncle Joe. Love you.
Love you too.
Thanks for joining us, Uncle Joe. Alright, perfect. And then the next one on the list is me. So tonight, I have my husband swearing me in, so I'm gonna scoot him right next to me. Alright, here we go.
Alright. I, your name?
I, Christina Pritchett.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
That I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Yay.
Yay. Alright, I feel like I got that one down after three times. So, I just wanted to really quick just say thank you to all of my supporters that have stuck by my side for the last eight years. And I'm just flattered to be able to serve my community for another four years. But mostly, I would like to thank all of our families who take the brunt of everything else that is left in our lives when we work so much. What many people don't know is that many of us board members also work full-time jobs and we're volunteers in all different aspects. So with that, I all, I just want to make sure that I thank my wonderful family. My husband is my rock and my sounding board, and I don't think I would wear clean clothes without him. And my children are what keeps me going and always my peace of mind, so. And being a parent to them is the most important rewarding job that I will ever have in my lifetime. Thank you. Alright, and so next, Member Rhodes. Would you like to introduce who will be swearing you in?
Uh, yes, um, my father, Dennis Rhodes, will be swearing me in today.
Mr. Flores, can you change the, the background so that we can see Member Rhodes, please?
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. Are we still waiting for the background to be changed?
Mr. Flores, can you hear me?
I, I can hear you. I'm actually, I'm able to see him on my screen. I see him on the, on the gallery view.
Okay, we are ready for you, Mr. Rhodes. Our Member Rhodes, sorry.
No problem.
I, Chinua Andweli Badju Maurice Rhodes.
I, Chinua Andweli Badju Maurice Rhodes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
That I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Member Rhodes.
Yeah, um, yeah, this is, this is, this is amazing. I want to first start off by thanking my, my father for always, for always being there and for being a part of raising me. I don't think that I would be in this place currently without him. But I also like to say, South Side pride, South Sacramento, man. I, I, I love you, South Sacramento. I, I, I have so many emotions when, when I, when I think about what we, we have the opportunity to do collectively. And there's quite often a saying, it's like, you know, never above you, never below you, but always by your side. And know that me in this seat as trustee, I will always be by your side. You know, this, this campaign was community-centered with our people at the forefront and people-centered movement is what we continue to build. I don't have a lot of time, I would say more, but I want to give respect to the other people who are going in. But once again, thank you guys. We did this together and let's keep on pushing and moving forward for change together. Thank you.
Fantastic. Alright, and now we have Member Villa.
Hi, everyone. My husband Cam and my daughter Poppy will be swearing me in this evening.
I, Jamie Villa.
I, Jamie Villa.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon.
Discharge the duties upon.
Which I am about to enter.
Which I am about to enter.
I just want to quickly say thank you to obviously these two for helping me throughout this whole journey, my family, my friends, and of course, all the community supporting me from District Four and beyond. I'm really excited to start this journey with you all, so thank you very much.
Fantastic. Alright, that's great. And so, Superintendent, do we have any public comment on this agenda item?
Vice President Pritchett, we do. We have three live comments and three written comments. And the first commenter is Brett Barley, and you will each have two minutes to speak.
Alright, hi, this is Brett Barley. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Tremendous, thanks. It's always hard to tell on these things. Good evening, board members and Superintendent Aguilar. My name's Brett Barley. I'm the Superintendent of the California Montessori Project. We are a small public charter school within the district. We've been operating in the district for 20 years. On behalf of the entire California Montessori Project community, I'd like to extend a congratulations to our continuing board members, Pritchett, Murawski, and Garcia, and welcome our newly elected board members, Rhodes, Villa, and Grace Phillips. We're excited to continue to partner with the board and get to know the new board members better as we all work to serve Sacramento City Unified School District students to the best of our ability. This coming year will mark the 20th year CMP has served students in Sacramento City Unified School District. Over that 20-year time period, we've enjoyed a very positive working relationship with the board. Each month, for the new board members that may not be familiar with us, we strive to bring the board a Montessori Minute update that is a quick outline of key happenings at our small school. We'll also extend an annual invite to tour our facilities and see our Montessori education in action with our teachers and students. This year may look quite a bit different than it normally would, but if you are interested in visiting, please let us know and we'd be pleased to show you what distance learning looks like at our campus. Thank you for your continued and future service. We look forward to continuing our strong partnership with the school district for years to come.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barley. Our next speaker is Jim Peterson.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, members of the board, President Pro Tem Pritchett and Superintendent Aguilar. My name is Jim Peterson and I'm the proud principal of Luther Burbank High School. On behalf of the 3,500 Florin Road Titan family, it is my honor to officially congratulate Board Member Rhodes. You'll notice that I'm using the word congratulate as opposed to welcome because his board, Board Member Rhodes has been a part of our Titan family for almost a decade. He serves on our African-American consortium. He's a member of our science equity team and over the years, he's supported us with the occasional climate challenge. He's also served our students as a Boys and Girls Club Director and he's even volunteered his services over the years, DJing dances and other special events. Board Member Rhodes is a collaborative, passionate, solution-oriented, creative thinker who exudes a positive energy that you'll soon find that elevates everyone around him. And he's also an awesome DJ, by the way. Congratulations, Board Member Rhodes. We're proud to be working alongside of you and look forward to this new chapter in your life as you continue to serve our students and family. Thank you and happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Principal Peterson. Our final speaker is Voceri Thomas.
Good evening. My name is Voceri Thomas and I am an Oak Park resident and a parent at AMWEN EK through eight. I want to congratulate and welcome the newly appointed board members and invite you to disrupt the, the legacy of corruption and incompetence that has recently been displayed here at the board that is indicative of the district's much greater problems. There's been recently a lot of talk about elephants in the room referring to the SC TA and the district's fiscal mismanagement. However, there are also the elephants of Member Murawski's hasty and privileged urge to vote, unprofessional behavior. Yes, Member Wu, we can all see you eating noodles and napping and Superintendent Aguilar's bloated salary. No, sir, you are not worth it. And while in a closed session, your board may have approved your annual review, I am one of over 500 and growing petitioners, parents, students, and community members who would beg to differ. We welcome you with the extreme honor and high hopes that you will work on behalf of teachers' working conditions, students' learning conditions, and the well-being of all SCUSD families, not just your own smug political ascent. Thank you very much. Welcome and happy holidays.
And do we have any more public comment?
Yes, we have two written public comments. And the first one is from Eduardo De Leon and says, "We, the SAC City Charter Collective, which includes Language Academy of Sacramento, Capital Collegiate Academy, Soul Arias College Preparatory, YAG Pem Swab Academy, Gateway Community Charters, SAVA, PS7 Sacramento High School, Growth Public Schools, and Aspire Capital Heights Academy, would like to congratulate our current board members Christina Pritchett, Lisa Murawski, and Letitia Garcia, and our newly elected SAC City Board members Genoa Rhodes, Jamie Villa, and Lavinia Grace, Gracie Phillips. Our staff, students, and families look forward to continuing to build positive relationships with each of you in the district. We look forward to inviting each of you to visit our school sites, meet our students, and learn more about the innovative and exploratory programs we offer as soon as possible. Our goal is to join you in providing equitable and innovative educational models to our SAC City student population and community. As a district, we are collectively better and stronger together. Happy holidays from our families to yours." And the final public comment is from Sydney Jahori and says, "Welcome newly elected trustees. As the year draws to a close, many of us will be thinking about our resolutions for the following year. How can we be and do better in 2021? As an SCUSD parent, it is my hope that you will bring a new level of professionalism and a servant leadership perspective to the support position you now occupy. Schools are where things happen for our children and teachers are the ones who make that possible. It is the job of everyone working in this district to support these groups so that students can be successful. Moving into 2021, it is my hope that the culture of this district shifts to reflect this understanding. Continuing to pit families against teachers as though our interests are different is counterproductive. Wishing you all a restful rejuvenating winter break." And that's the final public comment on this item.
Great. Thank you, Anne. I appreciate that. Alright, so that was item 7.1. I will bring us down to 7.2 and you'll organize it. Of the Board of Election of Officers. The Board shall elect a president, vice president, and second vice president. Nominations are open and I'd like to slate, as we have done in the past. For president, I nominate myself, Christina Pritchett. For first vice president, Member Murawski, and for second vice president, Member Wu. This will be a roll call vote. Superintendent.
Thank you. Member Pritchett.
Aye.
Member Murawski.
No.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Villa.
Yes.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Wu.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Fantastic. We have six yes and no, and we now have a new executive board. Thank you all for your support. Alright, with that.
President Pritchett.
Yes.
I'm sorry to interject. Your, your, your sound is going off and on. I'm not sure what's, what that's attributed to, but we, we lose you often during your comments.
Okay, I will adjust my camera. It's from my camera, so please just let me know if that continues to happen. Thank you for letting me know. Alright, uh, did we have any public comments? Sorry, before we move on, did we have any public comment on 7.2?
No public comment on this item.
And any board member comments? Okay, fantastic. Thank you. Alright, item 7.3, seeing the system, first quarter performance metrics by Mr. Vincent, Vincent Harris.
President Pritchett, before we start, I just want to, just before we start on this, just make a couple of comments, both to our board members, our new board members, as well as our community members. We often talk about the utter respect that we have to show when we present data and we think of it from the perspective of not just looking at data from a numbers perspective. You're going to see a lot of numerators, a lot of denominators. We think of both of these elements as representing lives of our students, representing stories of family members. And so I just want to just encourage you as you're looking at this deck of slides, there are a number of slides. There is going to be a lot of information presented to the board. I will ask that our staff take whatever time they need to and turn to President Pritchett to ask for any of our staff to pause at any point in time because it is a lot of information. And as you see all of the information, I would just ask all of our board members and our community members that within whatever context we're explaining information, that you just keep in mind that these are not just numbers. They represent our students, their lives, and a lot of stories throughout our community.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Mr. Harris.
Good evening, Board President Pritchett, Board members and Superintendent Aguilar. My name is Vincent Harris. I'm the Chief of Insurance Improvement and Accountability and actually joined tonight by several district leaders, including our chief academic officer, principals, directors of several of our strategic units within the district, to share with you a first view of data points in our system for the first quarter of the school year. And Superintendent spoke to, of course, all the data points reflect our students, reflect what's going on for them within the system. In many respects, it's also an opportunity for us to be very reflective. And so, with tonight's presentation, you're going to hear a variety of data points, some of which will go into the greater detail, others will provide a high-level view because we're still studying the results ourselves, particularly in the distance learning context. If we go to the next slide. And so in terms of tonight's presentation, we've got the data points segmented into two major categories, academic outcomes and then student engagement outcomes. And then we'll talk briefly at the end about some of our human capital metrics as well. The two items you see bolded in terms of our district common assessments and attendance trends, those will provide, in those, in those segments, will provide a little bit more detail in terms of not only the measures, but some of the work we're doing in support of our students. And of course, we'll write a broad brush of the other data points that you see listed. Go to the next slide. And so as Superintendent spoke to, all of this work is, is not just in the context of just looking at the And so as Superintendent spoke to, all of this work is not just in the context of just looking at the data, but it's really what can we do and particularly anchored around the board's core value in terms of we need to see the system in order to really work to confront and interrupt inequities. And a lot of which you'll see tonight will speak to some of the existing inequities in the system. But we'll also speak to some of the work that's underway to disrupt. And all of that is with the goal and objective of really fulfilling the promise of the guiding principle, which really speaks to all students having equal opportunity to graduate with the greatest number of post-secondary choices and the widest array of options. If we go to the next slide, please. And so as we, you know, pierce all of what you're going to see tonight, there are a combination of bright spots and of course, several opportunities. And we spoke at the last board meeting about the work underway in supporting our trend with graduation A through G completion. This fall, we launched our fall, our student school climate survey for the first time. We've already heard testimonies on the learning hubs and so we'll talk a little bit more about them as well in this presentation. And then of course, we've had the district common assessments. And so while that's also a bright spot and an opportunity, certainly where we have data, it's allowed us to support student learning. And then finally, as we think about our students, particularly in the climate of the pandemic, you'll see reports from staff in terms of the supports we're directly providing students as they manage their own situations and as families manage their situations as well. In terms of the opportunities, there is still significant student disproportionality across multiple measures. And every measure, we won't necessarily talk about the disproportionality that's present simply for the sake of time, but this is a mission critical item for us as a staff to deal with and try to reconcile because disproportionality does exist in significant ways in some of the measurements. As you'll hear about the district common assessments, there is uneven participation. And so we'll talk a little bit about that. And ultimately, the context of how we look at the system has changed in this distance learning season. And so we've constantly been rethinking, what do we measure? How do we measure it? And think about other measures that are beyond the traditional brick and mortar measures that we traditionally have used in the past. And of course, we have our ongoing fiscal challenges which impact our overall capacity. With that, I'll trend up. Next slide, please. With that, I'll transition the presentation to Chief Academic Officer Christine Beata.
Good evening, President Pritchett, Superintendent Aguilar and all of our new and continuing board members. I am Christine Beata and I serve as your Chief Academic Officer. As we work tonight to see the system, to truly see our entire system, we must have data, data from common assessments. As you know, we cannot improve what we cannot measure. So from our boardroom to every living room across our great district, we must be able to provide accurate data on student growth and on student performance. And this is not just something that we know that we need in service to our students in Sacramento City Unified. Our state frameworks for ELD, mathematics and English Language Arts all call for the need for comprehensive assessments and progress monitoring. We must also, based on child find, find each and every student in our system who has a disability and get prepared to be able to accurately serve their needs. We must have assessments that help us understand a student's response as we begin to provide them the interventions that are targeted to their needs and be able to find students who have additional needs. We also need our common assessment data for gate qualification, EL re-designation, as well as for other district programs. And as you know, a multi-tiered system of supports, MTSS, is the foundation of health in a district. It's dependent on assessments. For our teachers to have the tools that they need to find what is working for our students, they have to have this common data that they can analyze together to find and share the best practices that are working for our students, the very students that we serve. This cannot happen without common assessments. We must have a system that provides our board, our sites, our parents and our students with actionable data to ensure that the instructional and consequential learning improvements that our students deserve. With us tonight to provide a practitioner's boots-on-the-ground perspective is our esteemed Principal Erin Hansen, who serves on our assessment committee, our MTSS design team and is an MTSS Cohort One Principal at our Caleb Greenwood Elementary School. Good evening, Principal Hansen.
Good evening. Thank you, Ms. Beata, and good evening, Board Members and Superintendent Aguilar. When we returned to school in the fall after connecting with our students to ensure their well-being and their access to working technology for distance learning, our biggest concern was identifying the learning needs of each and every one of our students. Essential standards, universal design, technology, lesson plans, engagement strategies and minutes allocated to small group instruction are only effective when we actually know what our students need and we only find out what they need through meaningful, reliable assessments. So we used our district common assessments, those in foundational reading skills, language arts and math, to assess unfinished learning and identify patterns of need across our grade levels and those of individual students. Armed with the information gathered through these assessments, we were able to collaboratively analyze student need, ask and answer questions about unfinished learning and on which standards we needed to focus, both whole class and individually. Assessment data and the collaborative time we've devoted to analyzing it and planning instruction allow us to maximize the limited time we have with our students, always, but now more than ever. Through universal design, differentiated instruction and small group instruction, we have utilized the data acquired through common assessments to design learning engagements that address the specific needs of our students. We are now in the process of administering our second round of common assessments. These ongoing assessments allow us to figure out now what's working for our students so far this year and to use that learning and our attendance of improvement science to scale those strategies to larger groups of students, to identify gaps in student learning and gaps in our instruction to make adjustments to our strategies to better meet the needs of our students. I talk with my teachers all the time about the difference between teaching and learning. They are not the same function. Essential standards and curriculum tell us what to teach, but they don't tell us what our students need to learn and if they are learning it. So assessments such as these allow us to measure student learning, have a common language to talk about student achievement and improvement, ensure we are providing equitable access and opportunities to all of our students and provide our students with the free and appropriate education to which they are entitled. And with that, I will hand it over to our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, Matt Turkey, to give you some more details about our common assessments.
Thank you very much, Principal Hansen. If we could, oh, thank you very much. So, good evening, Board President Pritchett, Superintendent and members of the board. My name is Matt Turkey, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. In the wake of school closures and the start of distance learning, the Council of Great City Schools advised that districts will not only need to address the significant social and emotional toll that the crisis has taken on children, but also the widespread unfinished learning and learning losses sustained by students. Unfinished learning refers to concepts students have not yet mastered from the previous grade level, knowledge they will need in order to access current grade level content. As such, assessments selected for the beginning of the school year targeted unfinished learning from the previous year. This was the first time these assessments were administered, creating baseline data. Beginning of the year assessments were administered in math, English Language Arts and foundational reading. Next slide, please. Participation rates are important to consider when looking at data. This high-level summary shows us that for the beginning of the year ELA and math assessments, just over 60% of elementary students participated. Just over 50% of middle school students participated and under 30% of high school students participated. For our foundational reading assessments in grades K through 2, around 60% of students participated. Next slide, please. The tables on this slide give us a more detailed view of participation rates for English Language Arts and Math by grade level. Participation rates in English Language Arts show that 63% of elementary students were assessed. 51% of middle school students were assessed and 24% of high school students were assessed. The lowest participation rate was 12th grade and the highest participation rates were in 4th and 5th grades. In mathematics, the highest participation rate was once again in the elementary segment with 60% of students being assessed. In middle school, 56% of students were assessed and in high school, 29% of students were assessed. The lowest participation rate in math was in 12th grade and the highest was in 3rd grade. Next slide, please. This slide shows us a high-level view of results by grade level. Looking at the first graph on the top left, an average percent correct for English Language Arts shows students in 2nd grade attained the highest achievement at an average of 63%. And students in grades 8 and 11 had the lowest average at 44%. The average percent correct for all students across the district, across all grade levels in English Language Arts, was 52% of the questions correct. The next graph on the top right shows the average percent correct in mathematics. This graph shows students in 1st grade attained the highest average at 77% and students in 12th grade had the lowest average at 34%. There is a noticeable dip in the average percent correct in grades 4 through 6 and in high school generally. The average percent correct for all students in the district who completed the beginning-of-year assessments in mathematics is also 52%. A variety of foundational skills assessments were administered in grades K through 6th grade. The Core Phonics Survey is one such assessment and was given to students in grades K through 2. This assessment indicates whether or not a student needs instruction in selected phonics concepts. Of the 1,746 kindergarten students assessed, 43% were meeting standards, 10% were nearly meeting standards and 47% were not meeting standards. Of the 1,676 1st grade students assessed, 33% were meeting standards, 18% were nearly meeting standards and 49% were not meeting standards. Finally, of the 1,859 2nd grade students assessed, only 11% were meeting standards, 15% were nearly meeting standards and 74% were not meeting standards. Next slide, please. Making the data actionable and meaningful for teachers at the school level is of utmost importance and ultimately what these assessments should be used for. School sites have received district-wide guidance and ongoing support focused on administering assessments and running reports to display data in ways which help inform instruction. Teacher assessment guides have been updated and shared for the current school year. These guides are the go-to resource for testing administration and gathering data from Illuminate, our data management system. Before the start of school, all site administrators and teachers engaged in an assessment rollout training. In early October, site administrators engage in an Illuminate Reports training focused on running reports to drive instruction. School site principals have in turn engaged their teachers in this same training. Screenshots from one of the data reports site administrators and teachers have been trained to use are shown on this slide. This report can show data for each grade level at the district, school and classroom level. For example, at the classroom level, this particular report can help teachers answer the following questions. How did my class do overall? How did individual students do? What are the standards my students are strongest at? And what are the standards my students are weakest at? What questions did my students get mostly wrong? And how did different student groups perform? Teachers use this data to identify what to focus on during tier-one instruction for all students and how to group students per targeted instruction to accelerate unfinished learning or to challenge advanced learners. Thank you, and I will now hand over to Vincent Harris for the next slide.
So we talk about ways in which we see student academic performance. And of course, the most traditional model is through letter grades. And so this provides a comparison between quarter-one percentage of Ds and Fs last year versus this year. And certainly in the context of our national look at this type of information, there has been seen from LA, Los Angeles Unified School District all the way across country to a Fairfax County School District in Virginia, there's this increase in letter grades, Ds and Fs percentage. And our data points are comparable in that regard and the biggest bubble is at grades 8th and 9th. However, this is something we're still studying because as we look across the secondary grades in terms of this performance, we were struck by the decline actually in grades 11 and 12 and still need to do a little bit more to understand that variation. But of course, in the context of this work, we do see the increase year-over-year is something that we're obviously focused on to mitigate going forward. And definitely here too, just in the interest of slides, we're not showing all of the disproportionality, but this is another place in which we still do see the traditional students that we might think of in terms of demonstrating disproportionate results. With that, I'll turn it over to our Director of Guidance and Counseling, Christine Espinoza. And next slide, please.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome, new board members. My name is Christine Espinoza. I'm the Director for Guidance and Counseling. And today I will be sharing with you some of our data related to graduation. So on this slide here, you'll see our four-year cohort graduation and our A through G completion rate. So you'll see going back to 2016, 17, where we had for graduation an 81.9%. And these are official data now. And we ended the year with 86.8% in terms of A through G, which are the minimum requirements for students to complete in order to attend a four-year college or university. We started in 1617 with a 44.5% completion rate and we ended the year with a 53.7% A through G rate for the 1920 academic year. So again, the embargo data was released last week and these are now the official numbers. Next slide, please. And as Mr. Harris mentioned, we do see for, in terms of graduation, that we had a decline in our graduation rate in terms of our ELS subgroups. And we did start pulling for foster and homeless youth, but we did see some increases, at least for foster youth, but we saw a decrease for homelessness. So we've been working over this last year and continue to work this year with our Student Support Services Department to collaborate and continue to support those particular subgroups of students. We did see an increase among our African-American students in graduation, but again, we still have work to do in other areas. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Christina. Hi, my name is Jennifer Kretschman and I am the Director of MTSS and I also oversee the Be Here Attendance and Engagement Grant. So this first slide is just an introductory slide and it's really to define what attendance is in distance learning. In the past, attendance is when a student shows up, if they're present or absent. But now it looks very different. So a student can meet the criteria for participating if they show up to a Zoom session and this can be for the whole-class Zoom. It can be for a one-on-one office hours or it can be for small group instruction. And that's our highest level of engagement. Or they can complete a regular assignment. So this can be a survey, an essay, a report, anything that they turn in, a completion of an assessment or a test. So say they don't show up to Zoom, but they do complete an assignment. They can still get credit for participating. And lastly, and this is our lowest level of engagement, is contact between the family or the student and a SAC City employee. So say a family's having issues with internet and they call the school and they talk to the teacher and they report that they weren't able to log in today or turn in any assignments because their internet was down. This actually counts as participation. It's our lowest level of engagement, but it does count. And teachers are now documenting this level of engagement so we can see where students are participating. This definition was defined by CDE and it's actually in SB 98. So this didn't come from us as a district. It is the standard across the state. And this next little piece is the data that we're looking at. So as usual, we're looking at that attendance rate, which is how many students are showing up, the percentage of students that show up over the percentage of students enrolled. Then we're also looking at chronic absence, which has been our big buzzword around for the past few years. And this is what we're trying to reduce because research shows that kids that are chronically absent have a higher risk of dropping out and not completing school. So that chronic absence rate for a student is when a student misses two or more days a month or 10% of their enrolled school days. For a school, we're looking at the number of students who are chronically absent. That's their chronic absence rate. For a school, we're looking at the number of students who are chronically absent. That's their chronic absence rate. And then this new number is again, another number that CDE came up with, and that's our significantly disengaged rate. We named it that. But in SB ninety-eight, it defines it as missing three of five school days in a week or missing sixty percent of their enrolled school days. So in the next slide, you'll see some data that is addressing these points. Okay. So this data is really just a point in time. This is pulled on November sixteenth for data from the beginning of the school year through November ninth. On that top row reflects the average attendance rate, chronic absence rate, and significantly disengaged rate for the district as a whole. And as you move down, this is different student groups by ethnicity. So as you can see, our African-American and Black students are disproportionately represented in all three areas. They have the lowest average attendance rate, the highest chronic absence rate, and the highest significantly disengaged rate. So we need to do something to address this. Next. This is the same data points, but we're looking at different student groups. So these are English learners, our students with disabilities, our socio-economically disadvantaged, our foster youth, and our homeless youth. As you might imagine, and as can be expected in distance learning, it's really difficult for our homeless students to engage. And so what this data has done is it has helped us to increase our collaboration with our Student Support and Health Services and our Homeless Services Department. And so we are working more closely to monitor, provide services, break down barriers, get them hotspots, whatever we can do to assist our homeless families. Next slide. So this next slide is just a bunch of visuals. It's a dashboard we created that shows these same data points, but in different graphs. The one on the far right is actually a depiction of our different student groups year over year at the same point in time. So for all of our student groups, this is our chronic absence rate. Our chronic absence last year is in blue. It was significantly less than it is this year in yellow. So this year, despite all those ways to get credit for participating, our students are not showing up at the same rate as they have been in the past. This middle group shows our, this middle graph shows our significantly disengaged students. As we just discussed, it's really difficult for our homeless youth to show up. And so we have really been putting in the work to assist in removing barriers. What I do want to point out that's really interesting on this graph is last year, when we jumped into distance learning and everyone was in crisis mode, our English learners were disproportionately represented in the unreachable students list. And we were able to mitigate that. We were able to remove those barriers, create ways to communicate with families through our home visits and just all of our outreach. And now they're one of the lowest percentage as far as significantly disengaged student groups. And then on the left there, those are our, that's the same graph of our attendance rates. And as you can see, African-American and Black students, and then American Indian students have the lowest average attendance rate compared to the other ethnicities. And you can just see some other little data points up there currently. There are about nine hundred students who are significantly disengaged. Again, we're looking at our average attendance rate in twenty-twenty is ninety-three percent. Last year, at the same time, it was ninety-five point three percent. So we're going to get to the next slide, which will show you what we're doing. So our Be Here Grant in previous years was an initiative. It was a campaign to get kids to come to school. And we were awarded another three years. And what we're really working on is building the foundation of a district-level attendance and engagement office. This is really important because students need to be at school to learn. And so this is what our office right now has been doing. And our office at this current time has three child welfare and attendance specialists who support schools and students. This year, we have coordinated and conducted staff trainings. And so this is for all of our office and attendance staff, all of our principals. There have been multiple trainings for both secondary and elementary levels in August, September, and November. We have created a comprehensive distance learning toolkit. And so basically, this is a PDF version of all things attendance and engagement from our data points, our how-tos, our definitions. And then our, the most important part, our interventions and how we can use data to address these issues and provide the right supports to the right students at the right time. We also have what we call an Attendance Improvement Movement Meeting. That's our peer learning network. We had our first one last month, and our next one is actually tomorrow. We had over a hundred participants. And this is where various people and staff members from different schools at all levels get together. And we talk about attendance and engagement and what we're doing that's working and what we're doing that's not working. We have experts in the field present. We learn about resources. And then the most important piece is we share information. We talk. We have people from different neighborhoods and different communities share what's working for them in hopes that maybe it's going to work for someone else in a different area in the district. It's a really, really great meeting. And then, like I mentioned, the work of our Child Welfare and Attendance Specialists. So what this is, is really it's our database decision-making for attendance and engagement. What we do is we go out to sites and we support them in creating an attendance team. We facilitate these data-based meetings. We provide that actionable data. And then we help them to create a site level. This is called the MTSS Pyramid. But that's basically a pyramid of the different levels of interventions that they have available at their site to address attendance and engagement. And then we continue to assist with this progress monitoring. We help them do their engagement support plans. We help them with home visits, and you'll see that here on the next slide. So this is how our office is directly supporting our students. So you may have noticed there is no truancy in distance learning. You have not been receiving those letters if your students have missed school for unexcused reasons or unexcused absences. Instead, what we're doing is we're trying to be as supportive as possible because we know this is a difficult time for everyone. So again, we've partnered with In Class Today, and we've sent out one, just one supportive informational absence report. And this went out on December fourth to about seven thousand students, and these were elementary-level students. And about ten thousand text messages were sent. And these were two-way text messages, and they basically just said, we've noticed that your child Johnny has missed five days. We know that this is a really difficult time. Is there any way we can help you? And we provided a list of resources and we gave them phone numbers to call. And on the backside, it tells them, gives them information points on how they can talk about difficult things. Also where they can pick up meals right now, right? So our goal is to build relationships, to build trust, and to be supportive. Our office is really focusing on building those relationships first. That's the core of our work. We also do direct interventions and supports. So when some of our school sites have exhausted all of their resources, their student support centers have done home visits. They have done referrals. Their families just aren't engaging. They can't find them. They can't get in touch with them. We will go out and we do what we call a Tier Three home check-in. And so this year, so far since September, we've visited seventy-six students at fifty-two households. We also assist with engagement support plans. And these basically look like a CERT plan, which is our Student Attendance Review Team, but it's engagement support. So it's not a contract. We do not have the families sign. We're actually doing a needs assessment, finding out how we can help in doing everything we possibly can to get these students able to engage in school, able to learn. And you'll be hearing about those learning hubs later and the benefit that they are, especially for our students who are struggling to attend. And then lastly, we support connectivity. I know we just got a new load of hotspots in, and O'Neil was busy delivering about two hundred hotspots this week. So far, prior to those two hundred, we'd given out one thousand ninety-six hotspots. Eighty-nine to staff, one thousand and seven to students. We had provided three hundred and one Wi-Fi codes, and that's for our Kids Connect program. And that's just since September, and that's the district office only. So more of those codes are being given out at the school sites. And then to date, we've given out twenty-nine thousand two hundred and five Chromebooks. We really can be at that one-to-one ratio for devices. Our whole goal is to get students connected. And then these are just some pictures when we do our home visits or when we deliver our devices. Like our families are so excited to see someone and connect because they really miss that school experience. And so we were able to get a couple of pictures with permission, and these are our kiddos. So thank you so much. And next slide.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Flores. I serve as the Director of Student Support and Health Services. And we're here tonight to help you sort of see the rest of that system that Jennifer was speaking about that supports our students and our families. So this is data from our quarter-one data report going from August all the way to the end of November. And this slide represents a really like small but mighty team of caring, dedicated professional staff. We're talking nurses and LVN, social workers, mental health clinicians, youth advocates, clerks. It takes a whole entire village, and every single one of us on a school campus in a district office really need to lean in to support our families. And before I dive into the data, I really wanted to take a moment to honor and highlight the numerous community partners and leaders that partner with us in support of our community. We could not do this work without them, and you'll hear and you'll see how they show up in this work. And so we're just really grateful for them, from the city to county partners, our expanded learning, healthcare providers, university-level interns, food banks, our nonprofit organizations, our donors. Just really create this beautiful system of support for our communities. So on the, on the left here, I'll talk a little bit about our Student Support Services, and these are just some snapshots. This represents our twenty-nine school-based student support centers, our district-wide Connect Center, our Foster Youth Services, and including our TUP, our Tobacco Use Prevention Education Program, as well as our Homeless Services. And so you can see that we've served nearly eleven thousand students to date. And this is using our early warning system, the early identification and intervention system to identify students as well as referrals from pretty much any source. And we've had a thirty-one percent increase in, in the number of students that we've served from last year. So this need for service has really dramatically increased. You know, however, we've also pivoted with how we're providing these services, and we are providing a lot more tier ones. You'll see in this slide a sixty percent increase from last year to this year. And what we quickly learned in the spring were our parents and our families, they were zoomed out. They did not want to engage over another Zoom call, not even necessarily a phone call, maybe a text. And so we realized, you know what, if they're not, you know, comfortable or just don't have the space to come to us, then we will go to them. And so this is where we're really grateful for our educators and our teachers who identified the need, saw the need, and created space for us in their classrooms so that we can provide these kinds of interventions. So we're talking things like mindfulness lessons, any kind of SEL lesson around, you know, potentially emotion management, whatever was, was the need for that developmental age and grade, all the way to evidence-based curriculum, like signs of suicide for our sixth through twelfth graders that really talk about suicide prevention. Talk about those feelings and what to do and how to support their friends or even themselves if they're struggling. And kids really love to talk about these topics that, that most adults, I think, find a struggle with. So from there, you know, if, when we identify students, particularly when we're doing something like signs of suicide who need additional supports, we can be there to provide those targeted tier-two, tier-three interventions. One of the things that we also really realized is, you know, Jennifer talked about the need to engage our families and our students. And so many of our families not showing up is we needed to go out to them. You know, if they're not able to come to us, then we're going to go out to them. And so we've done five hundred and forty-nine home visits, targeted outreaches. That's almost a two-hundred percent increase from last year. Because of course, you know, we had students on our campus, and we're not able to do that right now. So we will go out and find them, support them, figure out what those barriers are, and, and work to, to rectify that and get them back on track. And staff have also completed over a thousand suicide prevention trainings that identify addressing signs of suicide and supporting trauma-informed practices. So this is really important because we want our staff to be able to understand when our students are distressed and to intervene and get them help before they become so distressed that they might experience thoughts of suicide. So we're really continuing to push that. It's an online module that staff can complete at their own space. It's a little bit like a video game through a company called Cognito. And then lastly, because so many of our students are now online doing this distance learning, we were required to have an internet safety filter. And one of the great features is it also flags when a student writes something about self-harm or harm to themselves or others. And so to, through the end of November, we've had a hundred and ninety-three of these alerts. And we've been able to triage them and get them the support that they need. And we're really thankful for all of our staff who are a part of that system, who quickly assess and respond to those needs. And some of them have been rather significant, and we've been able to help, you know, families and students when they're in crisis. On our Health Services side, as you can imagine, we've been incredibly busy in the midst of this global pandemic. Our schools, school nurses, our clerks have been supporting the public health and well-being of our community since February, honestly, when, when all of this started to happen. They've authored parts of our Return to Health Plan, Return to Play, created many other documents, and have done a host of trainings for staff and students. We've also supported over a hundred and fifty-two individuals who had concerns about COVID, whether they called us because they were sick or symptomatic. They were concerned, maybe they had an exposure, or they were identified as a close contact and they were required to quarantine or even diagnosed with COVID. And as you may know, or you may have experienced, or maybe you can even imagine, it's really scary time. It's a worrisome time for people. And so our goal is to really provide that care and support and guidance and education that they need to manage each unique situation. So these are timely, but they're definitely worth it, and our hearts and our souls are in it. I just want to say this work happens really quietly and confidentially. We respect the privacy of our staff and our students, but it happens every day. We also wanted to highlight that our immunization clinic is back up and running with all new COVID protocols. We had to completely reimagine how we do things. So we quickly transitioned to online portals and helping parents fill out and submit whatever forms they need so that we can support the health and safety of our families and our students coming to our clinic, but also our staff. So we have this really great system where they pull up and text. We can physically distance, get them in, do that health screening, give them their immunization. We're able to give flu shots as well, get them on their way so they're healthy and safe in school. We've also partnered to do flu clinics at a number of our schools. So we've had eleven flu clinics to date. We continue to look at hosting more, and we couldn't do this without our community partners, Stat County Public Health and Health Net. We've served, I think, nearly over four hundred students and families and staff through these flu clinics. And we're always looking for ways to, to leverage and triage how we can do these things. So we also partnered with Center for Oral Health. And you can see a picture here on the bottom of some of the swag that the Center for Oral Health provides to our students and families. But they do oral screenings, they do fluoride varnishes, and then they help our families link to those, those oral health or dental offices. We know oral health is a really significant unmet need and actually a really big contributor to chronic absence. So this is kind of that twofer that we're always looking for. And then our nurse interns and our nurses have provided a host of, you know, in-class interventions on everything from COVID to well-being to mental health to dealing with anxiety. And so again, just lots of tier-one supports, lots of education. And so you'll see some pictures here. The picture at the top is my absolute favorite. If you could kind of see it clearly, it's, it's a dad getting a flu shot, and his children are holding his hand. So it's wonderful modeling that even though maybe he's a little anxious, he's looking away. He's still got his flu shot so that we can stay healthy and not overwhelm our hospital systems with flu on top of COVID. Down to the, to the left there, you'll see a picture of the nine-five-eight-two-zero Food Project. This was really started in the Oak Ridge Community, community leaders, community partners, really identifying, you know, kind of, even though there's lots of resources, still a huge gap for our families in, with this pandemic food insecurity. And so they're hard at work doing a food distribution. And then also to the right, we've got a student who wanted attendance. And then also to the right, we've got a student who won an attendance raffle. So every day to support positive attendance, they'd get a raffle ticket and he won that this really cool pair of cushy headphones and just the beautiful bright smile. So thank you so much for letting us share and we we hope this helps you see the system of support that's working hard every day. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to the next slide to Manpreet Kar, our Director of Youth Development.
Respected board members and dear Superintendent, I'm Manpreet Kar, Director of Youth Development. So when we started our learning hubs and the objective of the learning hubs was to serve our most vulnerable youth, such as foster youth, students experiencing homelessness, our English learners, students who were not engaged in distance learning. So currently we are running seven learning hubs and out of those seven, six started on October eighth and one started on October twenty nine. We have one middle school currently running a learning hub, one K eight and five are elementary. So our preliminary evaluations show nine percentage decrease in chronic absenteeism. As I mentioned, we started these learning hubs to engage students. So we are happy to see those results that students, that there is we saw a decrease in chronic absenteeism. They are now less absent. We saw, on the contrary, we saw one point seven percentage point increase in their day average daily attendance. So they are attending more. Few students are disengaged as compared to disengagement rate for students who are not enrolled. Earlier, my colleagues Jennifer and Victoria mentioned how our students are not engaged in distance learning. So we see that less students are disengaged who are attending learning hubs. Currently, we are running a student and principal surveys. And in future, we will share that student and principal survey data with the board. On January seven, when we come back in twenty twenty one, we will start five new hubs. And this will be our first time when we will have a high school and another middle school and then K eight and elementary site. And our current learning hubs, we have forty students in each hub, but from January, when we are back, we will have forty eight students. So we are increasing the number. Our learning hubs are running so smoothly that we are very excited to increase the number in each classroom, in each cohort. Next slide, please. So in these pictures, you see students sitting in the desks all six feet apart. You see them sitting under the trees during their recess break time and having some fun. You see students lining up on the blacktop and wearing their masks perfectly. And then you see students engaged in distance learning while while community partner staff is helping them. And I also want to recognize our five community partners who are helping us in these running learning hubs, running these learning hubs, because when we ask them for this work, they wholeheartedly agree. And they are doing such a fantastic job that since October twenty, October eight, we are running hubs, our learning hubs are running safely. We have not seen any spread, knock on wood. And we are very excited to bring more in January. With that, I will hand over to my colleague, Mycely. Thank you.
Thank you, Manpreet. Good evening. This is a long presentation, so I will be brief. Welcome to our new board members. Again, my name is Mycely and I oversee social emotional learning in SAC City. In October, we administered our first fall school climate survey for third through twelfth grade students to get a pulse check for how our students are experiencing social emotional learning, sense of safety and connectedness. As you can see, we had a participation rate of forty six percent. Our seventh graders did, however, have the highest participation rate at sixty four percent. There was a seventy one percent positive responses for both safety and school connectedness. The disaggregated data reinforces an equity gap in social emotional connections and positive experiences across grade levels, race, ethnicity and student groups, and serves as a reminder that we have a lot more work to do. Some of our takeaways, which we will use to continue to support our schools are the necessity of attending to the equity gap in relationship and community building, especially for our most vulnerable student groups that you, as you can see here. Intentional and explicit focus on S E L skills development, especially in the era of identifying emotions, a skill that is critical, especially during these times of great stress and anxiety. And as experts have said, you can't tame it if you can't name it. So as we look forward to the spring survey, it'll be important to increase participation so that we can truly see the system and have a better sense of how our students are experiencing climate and culture in SAC City. Thank you.
As we get to the final parts of the presentation, this slide is meant to remind the board of the importance of understanding students' behaviors that lead to suspension. And so ultimately, we can see the disproportionality as we have seen historically within Sacramento City Unified School District among African-American homeless special education students. It's important to note, though, that this is one measure that in distance learning has really undergone for us a real rethink about how do we better understand behaviors in the virtual classroom space. To note, year to date, we've only had four suspensions. And and so for us, it's given us pause to rethink other ways that we might look at student behavior, at least while we're in the distance learning mode. But equally important, as we know that there's been an update to the capital suspension report, also rethinking how do we get after issues of climate? Really tying back to Mrs. Lee's presentation about how do we address the notion of all students feeling comfortable and decrease overall in climate suspension. We'll wrap up the presentation now with a report on our human capital work on the next slide. And this, I'm sorry, then this slide just gives you the absolute numbers, just of terms that we have the four suspended year to date for the whole district. Go to the next slide.
Good evening, Superintendent and Board Members. I'm Christina Yegas, HR Director. Welcome to our new board members. In this slide, you will see a table that reflects various human resource data points and measurables, such as the number of assignments and on transactions that reflect the manual key entries performed by HR staff based on the additional work, duties, services provided to students and completed by site staff and new hires. Key areas to note on this slide. In comparison to last year, nineteen twenty, which we provided the data here, there has been an increase in E D D unemployment claims and could possibly be due to the decrease in substitute and per diem staff unable to be at sites while schools are closed. With this, we've seen an increase in fraud cases and have been working closely with E D D to help address those issues. We also noticed a decrease in the DOJ fingerprint clearances process, limiting the number of clearances for volunteers to be on campus due to school closures and also the district office being close to the public and parents to come in and process for fingerprinting. This has fostered a new partnership with a local fingerprinting agency so that we can ensure fingerprints for new hires are still taking place. We have also seen a significant increase in the number of transactions that staff are required to process due to staff movement. And lastly, we have noticed or we have seen an increase in the leaves of absence of district employees due to the current COVID pandemic. Thank you.
With that, that concludes the presentation.
Thank you. That was very informative. Do we have any public comments on this presentation?
We do. We have two live and two written public comments. And our first public commenter is Rich Vasquez. And each commenter will have two minutes.
Hi, Rich.
Good evening, Superintendent Agalar and new board president, Pritchett, members of the board. Again, thank you for the opportunity. Yeah, when we talk about seeing the system again, that we saw the system, but I go even further. Again, I'm seeing my system over at Hiram Johnson. It's not, you know, it's one of the worst systems. I saw the attendance data from last month. It went up to October twenty third. We had eighty four percent attendance rate. So the district average is ninety one percent. Okay, so what are we going to do about it? So that leads into the percentage of students with the D R F. It's sixty seven percent at Hiram Johnson. So the next closest in the district is fifty three percent. How are we going to fix this? What are we going to do? It's right in our face that that our kids are going to be failing. We're right, we're already getting behind. Our kids coming into, you know, what's these underfunded schools, we're already behind. How are we going to fix this? Again, twenty to thirty percent of the high schools are assessments. How are we going to find out? How are we going to identify this stuff if we're not having assessments for the kids? Again, so we go down to the school site council, our SIPs is right. We're not even implementing our SIPs correctly that where you're telling us to go here and tell us what you need. And so again, last year, we have teacher vacancies. My kid lived it. This year, I know we have two more. Are we fixing the system? Again, there's a lot of good efforts over at Johnson. We're working hard. But again, the system is stacked against us. We need manpower. We need more people. We need more funding. At the school site council, you're telling us we're going to lose, uh, lose our resource, E L resource coordinator. We're going to lose a campus monitors. We're going to lose social worker, uh, social economically disadvantaged. That's what our site is. We're damaged. Please, please. I'm going to keep bringing this to your face. Show me, show me you guys care about the most needed help students. I still got two years left. I'm going to keep bringing it. Please help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. Vasquez. Our next speaker is Sarah Williams Kingsley.
Good evening, Board Members and Superintendent. I wanted to comment on the data that you actually didn't discuss tonight, which is in the appendix of this presentation. On page thirty six and thirty seven are the district results for the core phonics survey, which are given to kindergartners, first graders and second graders. I saw preliminary data from last year in January when I participated in the a literacy task force that was looking at the district's literacy instruction, which was not good. The bottom line, though, is if you look on page thirty six and you look at the number of standards not met, the number of students or the percentage of students who took this survey, which I think is maybe fifty percent for our kindergartners, our first graders and our second graders, eighty percent are not meeting the standards. That's awful. It's disgusting. Like, we are not teaching our children to read. And then we wonder, many board members do wonder, why don't our third graders, why are our third graders performing so poorly on the state standardized test that begins in third grade? It's because in kindergarten and first and second grade, we haven't taught them to read. And we have, we've known that this survey was being given to students as early as September of two thousand and nineteen. And I know that I individually pressured many, many members of the district staff to bring this data to the public to share. I mean, this is representative of the data I initially saw or suspected a year ago. And it took all that time to come to the public and say, hey, we're not teaching our kids to read. And so the failure here of A, giving the survey as the district has requested of the teachers, and B, making this information public so that parents and families can do something about it is so alarming and so frustrating that I generally, my kid isn't even doesn't didn't even get this core phonics survey. He's in seventh grade. I'm I'm angry for all of those kids in our city and our district who are not being taught to read. And what are you going to do about it? And it isn't about third grade. It's about kindergarten and first grade and second grade. Fix it.
Your time has expired. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams Kingsley.
Our first written comment is from Allison French-Toubault. And she says, as a parent, I did not start out knowing the purpose of benchmark monitoring, but over time I have learned that it is a tool to let teachers see what knowledge and skills students have coming into a classroom or subject. Benchmark assessments are needed so that lessons can be based on what students need to learn. Without that basis, students may be struggling because the lessons require skills or knowledge they don't yet have, or students may be bored and disconnected because the lessons are repeating what they already know. It's really disappointing and concerning to see that less than half of our students were assessed in this way last year and how even fewer were assessed twice so that their progress could be measured. Hopefully this year, more teachers are using assessments, especially since in D L, there is less opportunity for for teachers to see how students are responding to lessons. But as a parent, I just have to hope that my kids' teachers see the value because unfortunately, teachers can opt out. It's so frustrating that this crucial piece of the education process is tangled up in the collective bargaining process with S E T A instead of agreeing that assessments are necessary and working out the nuts and bolts. The next comment is from Renee Webster Hawkins and says, this report on student assessment data is an entire year late, way too late to have to have had any impact last year. The assessment plan is designed to give teachers, administrators and parents information in real time to be able to immediately adjust the instructional program for students who are missing critical reading and math skills. This delay doesn't achieve that at all. Moreover, this report does not communicate any meaningful results even now. It doesn't include the actual results from the tests that were given. Parents are entitled to actual data on how their children are doing. Fifty seven percent of our students did not receive any of the district common assessments last year. Of those who received at least one assessment, only nine percent got two so that their actual progress could be monitored. The participation rate is simply unacceptable. Aside from that, the whole purpose of the assessments is to determine A, whether our students are actually making progress towards grade level standards, B, whether the curriculum we are using is any good or should be changed, C, whether our teachers need professional development in evidence-based literacy and math instruction, and D, whether students need tier two interventions or need to be referred by their classroom teachers for comprehensive evaluations in special education. This presentation doesn't answer any of these questions. Why did it take more than a year from the first district common assessments were performed to report on them at all? And when we did receive the presentation, why was there no sophisticated presentation of results by student group, by school site, by classroom? These are the questions which need answering now in order to fix the subpar instruction our students are getting. Simply put, well-performing districts use common assessments to improve outcomes for their students. Our district just guesses and then wonders why our students have such poor outcomes. And that's the final public comment for this item.
Right. I'll open it up our board member comments. Member Rhodes.
Thank you, President Pritchett. I have a few questions from the report. Luckily, some of them were answered during the report. So for for Vincent, I had a question about the the Ds and Fs. I was wondering, could the increases in Ds and Fs directly be connected to COVID and the general workload that's that showed that youth are going through in the distance learning realm? And then also, are these are these increases of Ds and Fs also with the fifty percent floor?
Yes. So the first, I'll ask your first part of this. Yeah, this is under the revised grading scale. That was approved. Certainly, to your question, that would be part of what we'd have to dig a little deeper on is to get to the root cause. And certainly nationally, there's 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 research that would suggest your point is well taken. But we haven't necessarily had empathy interviews with all of our students to really, I'll say, have a valid way of saying within SAC City applies directly, but that certainly makes a lot of sense, given the the nature of the pandemic, given other data points we have in terms of what our families are speaking to, just challenges they're facing. So I would say, you know, anecdotally, your point definitely makes sense. We haven't done necessarily a research report to confirm that.
Okay, thank you, Vincent, for that. And then my next question goes to Mrs. Krechman. I hope I said that right. If she's on.
Yes, you said it right. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. So, um, hearing about the the work you did, you guys did with English language learners is amazing and that work should be applauded. So just wanted to get to give you those kudos because that that is amazing to be able to reach out to the population group and then actually raise it. So I I do thank you for that work. I also had a question. We broadly talked about how we plan to connect, but can you speak to how we plan to directly connect with our Black Native students and homeless students? And what are some of the actual items that the department plans on implementing and when?
Yeah, so I can I can speak generally to what we are doing as our office. A lot of the work that we are doing is focused on working and supporting school sites. So when one of our attendance and engagement office workers goes out to a school site, we specifically look at their data. And so we ask them, based on their data, to create a general goal for the year and then a specific goal based on student group. So at some of our sites where African-American and Black students have the highest
So at some of our sites where African-American and Black students have the highest rate of chronic absenteeism, we're gonna focus on creating a goal around decreasing their chronic absence rate, and then looking at the interventions that would directly, um, impact Black or African-American students, right? And that's gonna vary by site and what resources they have available. Um, I know that there's a lot of work going into, and my C can speak more on this, the anti-racist classroom that's going to be um, really pertinent in this work. Um, but more importantly, it's really having sites dig deep into their own data and know that there are interventions out there specifically for each student group and utilizing those interventions to achieve the goals that we need to achieve for these students. Um, when we're talking about homeless students, what we've done, um, we have increased our collaboration with our homeless services department, where before, a lot of our work has been really siloed. When we started working on that unreachable student list last year, we created a direct communication and basically a shared data space to where we could find out what services were already being provided and then continue that tracking and monitoring. So what needs to happen at a lot, with a lot of these data points is, these are students. We provide an intervention, and then we say, bye, see ya. It doesn't work that way. We need to continually check back and follow up and make sure that what we're doing is working. And if it's not working, then we need to try the next thing, right? So, that's my answer so far.
Uh, uh, thank you for that, and, and your very, uh, consistency, uh, is the cornerstone of moving anything forward sustainably. So, um, it's not just about saying, hey, we want to do this for you, and then you're, you're, you're free to go. We've done it. We've done our part. It's continually reaching out to those, uh, the population groups. And, uh, you spoke to African-American students. You spoke to homeless students. I didn't hear you speak to Native American students, and sometimes our Native American, uh, our native families get overlooked in the conversation. Um, and so, um, could you, could you speak on that, uh, for, uh, our, our native community as well?
I can't speak so much to that. I know that Manpreet's department actually does have, um, a program. And so when we are working with, um, student groups or with individuals that we don't have the, um, manpower to, or the knowledge or the, uh, resources available, we actually have other people in our district that have those resources. And so Manpreet's Office in Youth Development have a specific grant, um, focused on helping our Native American students. And so if she's available, she can speak to the work that we're doing, because I know it definitely addresses chronic absenteeism.
Right. I was about to, uh, ask Manpreet the next question, so it follows right in line, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, and welcome, by the way.
Definitely. How are you doing, Manpreet?
I'm doing fine, and welcome aboard.
Yes, wonderful seeing you again. I think we worked together in youth development for, for years when I was do, working directly, uh, in, in programs at Sacramento High School District. So, uh, amazing to see you. Um, and so we'll talk, we'll, I'll let you, uh, talk about, uh, the Native American, um, outreach that you guys are doing and what that grant consists of. And then I have, uh, a question for you after that, and then that will be, uh, the end of, uh, my questions for now.
So in youth development, we serve Native Americans under Title VI. Um, so roughly in our district, we have less than one percent Native Americans, like, uh, maybe seven to nine hundred somewhere. But under Title VI, we serve those students who fill out five or six form. So we can, under the grant, we serve some, somewhere around one hundred thirty-seven students who, um, has identified themselves as Native American and has filled out the form. We reach out to schools every year. We ask parents to fill out the form five or six. So once we receive those, we provide tutoring services. So during distance le- learning, we have reached out to those students who have asked for those services. We have given them hotspots. We work with the Jennifer's Department. If anybody asks for that, we have given those. We provide one-on-one tutoring. We contract with a tutoring, um, uh, partner who provide those services. So students who want after-school tutoring, we provide tho- that. And we have a program associate in our, uh, associate in our department and um, another person who reach out to family. We make calls if students are absent. We work with the teachers. We have, uh, those educators who go directly into the Google Classroom and do present presentations regarding American Indian um, culture, heritage, and uplift students, getting them engaged. So we will continue this work, uh, but the right now in the department, we serve those under Title VI, the ones who fill out five or six and are willing to accept the services that we provide.
Amazing. Thank you, Manpreet. And, and, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm, I'm, uh, you said there was a, uh, nine percent, um, well, one point seven percent increase in, in, in children attending. Uh, is that, is that correct?
So, sorry, can I see that?
No, no problem, no problem. Well, so my, my bigger question was this. Um, do you have, uh, do you have a population breakdown, uh, of those increases and decreases groups? And, um, and do you have that information possibly broken down, um, by, uh, area? So we can, we can look, so us as, as different board members can actually see the disaggregated information there. It's, and I understand that to have the nine percent decrease, one point seven percent increase, uh, those, those are great numbers. Um, the bigger question is, how does it, what does it look like broken down?
Uh, so we are talking about learning hubs, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so yes, right now I do not have that data, uh, broken down by race, ethnicity, but we can definitely provide that data information in future meetings. Yes, definitely. So.
Okay, so, um, well, I would, I would like, uh, for you to, uh, um, board member, um, Board President Pritchett, uh, to have a, another update, uh, about the disaggregated data of the learning hubs broken down by area at a future, um, board, uh, meeting, uh, preferably early, uh, January or, um, early February would be great. Thank you. And then that's all.
Member Rhodes, what we'll do is we will, um, actually send you a BSC with that information, um, and then we will include that information uh, as part of tonight's PowerPoint, um, so that when it's posted, um, for our community to be able to download from our Board of Education meeting website, they can also see that information, uh, at your request.
Perfect. That would be very crucial. Thank you for that, Superintendent.
Great. Fantastic questions, Member Rhodes. Um, are there any other board members' comments or questions? Member Murawski?
Oh, thanks to everyone for a very informative presentation. Um, I, uh, I am kind of thinking back to the, the night that, uh, Member Garcia and I were sworn in two years ago. We had a very, uh, heavy presentation from Mike Fine and, and Dave Gordon, talking about our fiscal situation, and it was quite dire. And this kind of, uh, reminds me of that, um, you know, welcoming new, new board members onto the board and being hit with a, a very heavy situation. Uh, but now, you know, it, i- in addition to the fiscal, it's also, um, academic, you know, even more so than, than it was prior to COVID. And we, we did have urgency, uh, around academic crises before COVID as well. Um, so I just, I first want to give, uh, some props. I want to echo the props that were given, um, and just to, um, Victoria Flores and your team. You know, I, they're doing amazing work. Um, I, I hope and I know that you, you are also looking at their, um, their health and the exposure to trauma, and, you know, I just, I just want to recognize that team, because I know that, that work is very difficult. Um, I have heard about, and I don't think she's with us today, but, um, Ashley Clark at Oak Ridge, I believe, is in Area Seven. And I have heard about her work in the community, so I just want to recognize that as well, and actually want to follow up and, and learn more. Um, and also Principal Hanson, just wanted to thank you for your, um, your improvement work, uh, across the board that you're doing. And I had a question for, uh, Principal Hanson, if, and she's still on, um, just about, you know, this assessment data, because I think that's, that's such an important piece of what we're, uh, what we're trying to measure. You know, there's the, all this talk about learning loss, and how are we gonna mitigate learning loss? And we cannot mitigate it if we don't know what, you know, what we're trying to mitigate. Um, so I was just hoping that you could kind of make it real for us, maybe with an example, and I hate to put you on the spot, so if you want to talk in general terms, that's fine, too. But, um, if you have an example of like how, you know, you've seen it used in the classroom to, to improve, you know, uh, to identify skills that we're missing or improve things in the, it, it, and at the time, I would love to he- to hear that, you share that.
Yeah, I, thank you, Board Member Murawski. I am happy to share that. And in fact, it's a little hard for me to pick a specific example, so I think I'm gonna give you a couple, if you don't mind. Um, in our, in our K-two programs, we have administered the common assessments around foundational learning skills. So the core phonics assessment and the phonemic awareness assessment, as well as high-frequency words and a number of other concepts of print, various things that we assess our kindergarten through second-grade students for. And that has allowed us to identify specific areas in foundational reading skills where our students need, uh, small group support. So the essential standards in the curriculum guide us in terms of what we want to teach whole group. But when we take those common assessments and we analyze them for which, which part of phonics or which part of phonemic awareness our students are really struggling with, we can then put them into small groups where they are able to, the teachers are able to provide targeted instruction around, for example, rhyming or the ending sound of words. And in core phonics, it might be blending consonant-vowel consonant words, or what are the, you know, sound spelling correspondencies. And so we have been able to take all of that information and put our students into small groups based on the area of need, and then really maximize our resources to provide that support to students. So whether or not that, that might be a small group session with the teacher, uh, that might be a small group session with one of our special education teachers who's serving students with IEPs, but also providing needed interventions to students, or it might be an instructional aide who's doing some work around flashcards and letter sound correspondencies. Um, so from a, that's the foundational skills common assessment piece. We've also administered the common assessments in language arts and math for all of our grade levels. So an example kind of from the upper end of elementary is that in sixth grade, uh, our teachers have administered the language arts common assessments and other classroom embedded assessments and been able to identify specific standard areas where their students need support. So that might be around figurative language or theme or main idea and supporting evidence. And across our sixth grade classes, we have three, they have leveled their students based on their need as assessed by those common assessments. And then during targeted small group time, those students receive leveled support. And so you all actually, uh, last week got to see an example of what our sixth grade students, um, who are in a leveled language arts group, who are sort of in the accelerated enrichment category, they, we shared with them the FRP last week and talked with them about the impacts of the potential cuts and what that means, not just for our program, but for kids acco- across our district. And through our inquiry model, they decided to share with you the benefits of the IB program and their feelings around it. And so that was, you know, we have assessed those students, and we know that they're ready for things like that. So, you know, on the other end of the spectrum, we have students in sixth grade who really need help identifying main idea and supporting details and making inferential connections through the text that they're reading. And so other teachers, while that teacher, Ms. Cole, was working to, you know, sort of provide enrichment and acceleration opportunities, we had other teachers who were doing close reads of text and really working to identify what the main ideas and details were. And we had other teachers who were working on writing summaries and citing textual evidence. And so when we use common assessments to identify what those student needs are, we're able to really slide students into groups and provide that targeted, targeted instruction. And, you know, prior to, I just want to say one more thing, and then I'll wrap up, but prior to implementing these common assessments, one of my biggest struggles as a principal in our district was that I didn't have common language and common assessments to be able to engage with my teachers around our students' areas of needs. And so they would, they were doing curriculum-based assessments. They're always, our teachers are always assessing our kids. That's, that's standard. That's something that they all do. Um, but we weren't, we weren't able to really look at it holistically and make decisions across our site and across our grade levels about what our students need. So once we implemented these common assessments, we were able to make better decisions for all of our kids and start to scale some of the best practices that we have.
Wow. Well, thank you for that. That's really, it's really powerful for, for us to hear, you know, what happens at the classroom level based on these assessments, because I, I think there's a lot of kind of, I don't know, conceptions about, oh, well, we're over-testing or this and that. And, and it's like, this is very, very foundational, you know. And, and as a parent, I also appreciate getting them, because I know they're, they're pretty sophisticated, and they, like you said, they can target, like, you know, these are the concepts that you can work on with your, you, you know, your, in my case, my son. Um, so I think, you know, all, all of our parents should have the right to have, you know, the, the same type of information across the district. And, um, I would like to see those participation rates be one hundred percent. Um, I, I have, you know, a lot of other things to unpack, but I, I guess I would just, um, ask, you know, especially on the phonics, uh, that, that, those numbers really, really grabbed me, and, um, I, I'm hoping that, you know, uh, maybe the superintendent or, uh, Ms. Beata might be able to, um, just give us, like, what is your main takeaway from that in terms of what we need to do with that information? Because it's, it's very, very troubling and so foundational. Um, so I just, you know, I, I want to kind of know as a board member, like, this is really bad, like, how, how are we gonna fix it? Or, or what, what is your takeaway for us?
Well, why don't I start and then allow, um, our Chief Academic Officer, Ms. Beata, give her perspective as well? Um, one, I want to just say thank you, Member Murawski, for acknowledging, um, just the improvement mindset that I think we have to adopt in the district. We've tried our best. Um, it is slowly penetrating our system, uh, through our continuous improvement, improvement science protocols. Um, there's an adage in the world of improvement science that you can't improve what you can't measure. Uh, and certainly it is very frustrating for me as your superintendent, and I think you heard a little bit of that frustration from some of our public commenters, uh, that, uh, it is unacceptable, uh, that as we, uh, analyze data, that over half of our students did not take some of these benchmark assessments in either math or ELA. Um, there are, of course, some root causes for that. Uh, this is not a matter of, uh, people just, you know, not paying attention to it, or principals saying, you know, that's not really important to me. You can hear from Principal Hanson, uh, how, uh, benchmark assessments are utilized to provide targeted interventions, targeted instruction for students. I appreciate your call out that parents should have a right to understand this. Parents should have a right to expect when uh, some of this information is gonna come back to them and have confidence that, uh, our own children's needs are going to be met, um, academically. And in the case of, uh, climate and culture, social and, so, so, social and emotionally as well. Um, but for me, uh, that is a very significant takeaway. Uh, we are going to have to figure out how to increase participation rates, uh, given some limitations that we face, uh, because the idea that we would successfully penetrate the use of this really important data in the development, for example, of more robust SIPs, uh, uh, where, uh, we do have expectations that our principals are using this type of data to make sure that every investment can tie back to student outcomes is going to be critical, and that's going to continue to take some time. Um, I have said and will continue to say that, um, uh, I'm impatiently patient about that timeline. Uh, but we first have to increase participation rates in order to have greater confidence that we, uh, are going to be, uh, seeing the use of this kind of information to tie our investments back to student outcomes, which is something that we have said we have to, uh, focus much greater attention on. Ms. Beata?
I would also share that in addition to what, um, what superintendent brought forward, that from the instructional perspective, um, first and foremost, you have to imagine that you, with only fifty percent of the students having, for example, that core phonics data, that's a, that is an enormous problem. And that's a, that is an enormous problem and really an infringement, infringement upon the rights of those students who have the right to have their needs known by their teacher. Because without knowing their needs, we cannot appropriately intervene for them. So from an instructional perspective, we have to have that data. And then I think the other thing we have to acknowledge is we're right now trying to teach phonemic awareness, phonological awareness, phonics, which is very, very difficult to teach anyway. And we're trying to do that right now in distance learning. Um, we do struggle with mandated professional learning for our teachers. We were um, very fortunate to, at the beginning of the school year, have a series of professional learnings that teachers did have, um, that included the universal design for learning, which is um, a series of guidelines to help students become independent expert learners as we begin to understand what the barriers are for students, both to learning and to assessing. We just had a, um, a professional learning last week on barrier-free assessments through universal design for learning. We need to continue to be able to get that professional learning out to our teachers. And then we're also working on a series that would, at this point, have to be an opt-in series. So a teacher that decided that they wanted the training could participate. And we're about ready to launch some um, training, professional learning completely targeted to being able to teach phonological awareness, phonemic awareness and phonics. Um, our foundational reading skills, these are very important and constrained re- reading skills to our teachers. But again, this learning as it stands right now would be opt-in. We really struggle with mandated training for all. So we, we're, we struggle with the fidelity with giving the, the assessments as well as being able to provide the professional learning to ensure that teachers have the skills and then to be able to progress, monitor and follow up to find out is what we're doing, working. Um, that's really a struggle. So we do, in our assessment portfolio, we have it completely aligned to essential standards and a scope and sequence. And we would be ready to assess students to determine if what we're doing is working. But we have to be able to assess, we have to be able to provide professional learning and then be able to continue to look ongoing at how, how our interventions are working for kids. So I would say, Member Murawski, those are the pieces, the, the components superintendent shared, as well as the instructional components that need to come together, like a three-dimensional puzzle to start to change outcomes for the kids.
I appreciate that. And I would just, just close by saying um, maybe this, this speaks to, you know, uh, an issue I brought up in our school reopening discussion about the importance of the K through three and, and maybe thinking about focusing on those foundational grades, um, you know, as, as a priority. Because, you know, we, we just, this, it's, they can't move forward without those skills. Um, and I would also be just want, want us to look more about the disproportionality of the engagement and see how many of those students' needs, the 900 uh, some odd students' needs that um, maybe we can meet through, uh, through expanding the hubs or something in the meantime, because it's just unacceptable. Thank you.
Can I go?
Sorry, I was on mute. Member Garcia.
Okay. Um, thank you. Thank you so much. This was um, certainly a, a packed um, presentation. Um, there was a lot to um, to, to celebrate. I know, uh, I know there's a lot more work to be done. This is all in the spirit of continuous improvement. But um, there's a lot that has already been done. And I know that uh, the staff and um, uh, you know, from central office down to the school sites have been working very, very hard for a very long time, often with um, uh, without the, this, the um, traditional summer break. Um, and I also want to just make sure that, you know, that we know that what gets measured gets done, right? We can't measure it. We don't know um, sort of what direction we need to go to, where to invest our limited um, resources. Uh, so it's, it's really important and I just think it's a, it's a fundamental right that parents and students have to, to know where they're at. Um, as a parent, I want to know where my, with my children are, where my girls are. Um, they just recently had a benchmark um, test and they, they know what it's all about. Um, they're very well informed. They know the function of a benchmark test. They know it's not a pass or fail. It's just for their teachers to know what they know and, and sort of where to meet them. So it, it was just, as, as we're having this conversation, I just, I just came back to that moment. And I often learn so much from my daughters because they, they're just so smart and so well-informed. Um, and I can't take credit for that. Um, I also want to thank um, Principal Hanson for sharing the uh, Caleb um, experience and um, and for uh, taking us down to the classroom level. Uh, I was going to ask her to please, you know, take us um, to the classroom level by unpacking a little bit more of the information that uh, was, uh, the data that was revealed through the um, through the common sense assessment. And for making the importance distinction and without dismissing the importance of a common assessment and teacher's assessment, right? They're equally important. They just have a different function. Um, and so, so they're, they're just, um, I just want to uh, to know that I, I am grateful for that because we, we need to understand that both are necessary and um, and, and we shouldn't do one, uh, we shouldn't do without, without one. One is not a replacement for the other. Um, and for uh, letting us know what some of the themes and findings were from that first round of assessments. And I look forward to hearing what, what is the data from the second round, um, to make sure that uh, maybe the strategies that you're using at Caleb is um, is accelerating the, the learning that has, that didn't happen basically in the spring. It's not a loss. It was just, it just unfinished learning. So um, so thank you for that. And then I've, I'll have a few questions um, for staff. Um, and I want to stay with the um, theme of assessments. Um, you know, the, the, the participation is, is lower than of course what we all had, what we all hope, which is at 100%. Um, I am, I, I am also troubled by the very low participation rates at the high school level. So I'm just, I'm, I'm just wondering how are instructional strategies um, put into place so that um, students uh, accelerate their learning? Uh, so, so what do we do when we don't have the information? If, if you can just, someone can take us down that example.
Um, hi. So I can pipe up from the secondary uh, perspective here, Member Garcia. So without the information, I mean, to be perfectly honest, it's very difficult. The lights are off. Okay. We don't know what our students do know and are able to do as per the standards. And we don't know what they don't know and are not able to do as per the standards. And so if the lights are off, we, we can't target instruction.
Um, that's just difficulty here because um, these grades, every grade is critical, right? Because it builds on the next, um, on the next, um, it builds on prior foundation and then it prepares you for the next level. So um, so these high school years are just critical if we're going to get our students to graduation, to get them to post-secondary, um, you know, opportunities. So, as, so there's just a lot more work to happen in that, um, in that space. Um, I also have a question for Jennifer. On the slide, especially in the tier three um, uh, efforts that you had. I'm trying to find my slides here on my screen. Um, they relate to the um, I think to the home visitations, um, when you're the, for um, not engaged um, students. I, I was just wondering if you can unpack that a little bit for us and let us know why weren't students engaging, um, once you made that, that person-to-person contact? Um, so that we understand um, sort of what, what's happening there.
Yeah, um, you know, there's a whole plethora of reasons that range based on the family, the household and the age of the student. Um, oftentimes at the secondary level, when we would show up at their house, they were just refusing to engage. They were over it. They no longer wanted to be on a Zoom. They had all sorts of excuses and the parents just kind of threw their hands up at that time. Um, not always, but that was the most extreme that I would see. Then we would get to households and they just didn't know how to log in. They just didn't have their wifi. They just didn't have, you know, whatever it was that would allow them to connect despite the numerous emails, because I know that we have inundated families and I'm sorry for the over-communication, but we really wanted to make sure and ensure that every family could connect by the beginning of the school year. But sometimes when something happens, when they lose their internet, they just stop. And everything is so overwhelming at that point in time, because I have friends who have three students in elementary school and they just don't know what to do anymore. They don't know how to log into Class Dojo and Clever and their Zoom and they're just, you know, again, they throw their hands up. And so it's a matter of being overwhelmed and kind of um, some more of the assessments and things that we're doing as we're realizing that our parents need support as well, especially when we're talking about our younger kids. So I know our face department has again analyzed that data and trying to provide the right interventions at the right times.
Thank you. Um, I think it's just really important to understand what's going on in the household, right? I mean, and there is um, a variety of reasons as to uh, why students are not engaging. And it's something that uh, districts are required to, to, to um, look into, right? And provide the necessary tiered support. I mean, it, it's a condition of receiving funds. So I just, I just, I, I just really want to make sure that obviously um, we, we understand what's happening and understand how we're as a district addressing it. Um, so I, I just have two, two more questions. Uh, one related to um, HR, the leaves of absences related to COVID and, and obviously um, for um, we can expect for those to be really high. Um, I'm just wondering, are, are we, does that mean that for those leave, leave of absences, I'm just wondering, is that when we're hiring substitutes? Um, and uh, and then wondering, what's the average leave of absence? Just so that we can, just, I'm just curious to understand um, sort of what, what it looks like out there in terms of, of medical needs.
I can't remember who it was.
Yeah, that was um, Christina, but I'll go ahead and, and jump in. Hi, this is Consey. Um, the, the leaves range, some of them due to childcare, some of them due to medical. So on top of the, the normal range of leaves that you would see, which are anything from, you know, maternity, paternity to educational leaves. Um, people taking an opportunity to utilize those and then mixing in the two types of COVID leaves with childcare and then certainly with illnesses as well. We've seen just, you know, a, as to be expected, just a big jump in those areas. I would say that in terms of range, um, for the most part, they can range anywhere from a couple of weeks to a couple of months, to a few months, to more. We've seen um, employees extending their leaves on a more frequent basis than we've seen before. Um, and all of it is just based, of course, on the very difficult and different situations that they each face.
Um, thank you. I, I was just trying to process sort of, what is a a substitute um, teacher look like in avert, in a distance learning en- environment? Um, because I, I know that substitutes, for the most part, can't teach for more than 20 days, I believe. Uh, maybe it's 30 days now, but just wondering what that transition is, um, what that looks like in, in a guess, in this distance learning environment and sort of just thinking about the students and the parents, um, having to engage with multiple substitutes. If the leave is longer than whatever the, the limit for a substitute um, teacher is in terms of how, how long they can teach with one classroom.
Right. Teachers who are fully credentialed can teach um, beyond the 20 days. 20 days is limited for those that have their substitute permits. And you're right, they're, they're limited to that time period. What we have seen is in cases where there is a teacher on a leave, we're able to offer some flexibility with the type of additional credential support we can provide to some of those that have the more restrictive credentials. We brought a couple to you last week and, and have, I think, at the beginning of the year, where we're trying to, as much as possible, be flexible to allow consistency for um, for students, for school sites um, in the classroom, because we are seeing extensions of those leaves increasing. We worked with the curriculum and instruction department to offer some training for substitutes, because right, this is different. This is so different in so many, in so many ways. Um, so that they at least have an opportunity to get some basics down, to become familiar with the venue um, and the platforms before connecting in with their, um, their, their duties. So that's been helpful, but it's that kind of rotational basis.
Thank you. Um, yeah, again, this was just a, a, a great presentation with so much information and um, we, we can probably talk for, um, on it for hours, but I'll go ahead and let my colleagues ask their questions. So thank you. Thank you, everyone, for the information and the answers.
Thank you to my colleagues for all of those questions. Actually, that was many of the questions that I had myself. Um, I, I first just wanted to start by thanking staff um, on this report. Um, and uh, I, I think that we're doing some really great things and I think we can all agree that there's a lot of room from, for improvement. Um, we're working towards that improvement, but I just wanted to thank you for all your hard work during these difficult times. Um, I, I have just a few questions. Um, in terms of the uh, graduation rates, can you remind me what the state average is compared to where we were, where we landed this year? Anybody able to give me that information or do you want to send that information to later?
Uh, we, we should get it uh, right now. I'm, I'm waiting for either Ms. Espinoza or Mr. Harry.
It looks like she's.
Give me a second here. I don't have the updated number off the top of my head, but I can get it for you in a couple of minutes here.
Okay. But if I remember why, uh, correct, we are above the state average in terms of graduate, graduation rates now. Is that correct?
I, I'd have to double check. I, I don't want to, to.
Okay, that's, that's fair enough. I'm now going to, okay. And then um, in terms of uh, the attendance and distance learning, um, I have some questions about uh, mainly at the high school campuses. Well, I guess that actually would probably be um, related to all campuses, but I've received uh, several phone calls from parents and students about um, their children with their camera off and then they're being marked absent. So I'm just wondering if that's being addressed at the district level? And then what, what students and parents can do if that, this is happening? Cause I'm assuming that if they, if a student is constantly have their camera off and then they're being either kicked off of the Zoom class because they have their camera off or they're being marked absent, then they can potentially be in the markings of being chronically absent.
Correct. And that's not accurate. If they are there and they are present, camera on or off, they should be marked present. And so if that's happening, they should definitely contact their site and talk to their attendance staff. Um, we've heard of some data errors and initially there were, you know, it's new. Distance learning is new. Attendance and distance learning is new. And so there was a lot of misinformation out there. But like I said, we've had many, many um, uh, staff development trainings. And so hopefully by this point in time, um, it's very clear that there are three ways that they can be marked as participating. Engaging in live Zoom, camera on or off, um, submitting an assignment for that day, or even just the bare minimum. And that's that communication with the school site staff. So they should be marked present.
Okay, that's very helpful. And then um, and concerning our most disadvantaged students, um, I'm glad that you kind of went into detail about what we're doing. Um, but I know you had mentioned in terms of home visits. Can you tell me if those home visits are being done um, through the parent-teacher home visit?
These are different than the parent-teacher home visit. So right now, parent-teacher home visit is doing virtual home visits, to my understanding. You know, they did a training for it at the end of last year. These are more home check-ins and we're checking on the safety and wellbeing of our students. We want to make sure they're okay. They have everything they need to connect and that they, and provide any resources or additional resources they may need. So we come with a full list of places to get um, food, clothing, anything they need in hand and ready to serve.
Okay. So then that brings me to my last question. Um, at the last board meeting, um, student membership had brought up about the young man who um, committed suicide on camera um, in, in Lowdy. And um, I've really been thinking a lot. It's been, it's been really bothering me. And so um, in terms of home visits, are we able to target families that we know that it's possible that students um, have frontline workers and are not at home with their students while they're learning? Um, or, or maybe working with the parent-teacher home visits to be able to have them engage with these students? Um, knowing that they're home alone?
So I'm going to tag in Victoria Flores in, in this conversation, because they, her staff are also doing home. because they, her staff are also doing home check-ins and home visits um based on this type of need. Um, and they're slightly different than our engagement home visits. And so Victoria, if you would like to take this question?
Thank you, Victoria.
Sure, yeah, yeah, our staffer are out there knocking on those doors, just just like Jennifer. I mean, this is a whole system of support, so it's not just our staff either. There are so many people checking on our students. But you bring up a really good point, and these were the students that we also really did targeted outreach to around our learning hubs and creating that safe space for families, particularly in our middle school space, because, you know, they're old enough to be home, but they're also old enough to use their agency to play video games instead of logging into classes. So um, you know, th- this is one of the things we do when we go out is try to figure out what's going on. What's the system of support? Not everyone's going to feel safe or okay to send their student physically to school, and we want to respect and understand that. So what other system can we create? Are there other people in their households or their support systems that we can connect to? But you you bring up a really important and valid point.
Yeah, thank you. It's just that the social emotional health of our students is um at risk. And I know I brought that up many times. And then after hearing, you know, um and reading what had happened, it just really had been bothering me. I'm wondering what we're district and can we do more? And if there's more things that you feel that we could be doing that there's just not the funding for, please bring it to the board so we can try to find ways to try to fund this because our students are relying on this for this. Uh, member Wu.
Uh, superintendent, speaking of um absences, how do these numbers um reflect in our LCAP numbers? We're trying to get those LCAP numbers up. We're trying to get them filled up, um, the forms filled. How are are we um in each of these check-ins? Do the fa- do the um, um, do the employees or or people carrying with them the forms so that the families can fill them out?
Thank you, uh, member Wu. I'll I'll again go back to uh Ms. Kretschman um and uh anyone else that uh wants to speak on all of the efforts that we have begun to engage in to make sure that we do have all of those applications. Uh, I was briefed earlier this week. We continue to see uh more and more applications, but this is still uh an all-team effort um before the deadline. So uh, Ms. Kretschman, if you want to speak on that?
Yes, absolutely. And so so when we go out, and this has just been in the past couple of weeks, we are asking families if they have completed the um LCFF applications because we know it's this all-out effort right now. All departments, all hands on deck, get all of these turned in so we can receive this funding. And so um at our level, when we do go out, we um either provide the paper copy or we direct them to um the internet copy um website to where they can complete those applications.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Member Bella.
I'll keep this short. I just want to say thank you to staff for putting this wonderful report together. It's very informative. Uh, my fellow board members spoke um and asked a lot of the same questions that I was asking. I'm very concerned with the assessment process and the lack of information that's being disseminated out. I think that's very important, that what we're doing with that data and how we are servicing um our community, our students. Um, not providing assessments for our children across the complete district, not just one school, is crucial. So I would like to see uh more information um on what we can do and um why those assessments aren't being done and what are we doing with that data?
Fantastic. Um, are there any other board member comments or questions? Member Phillips.
Just one last question, being mindful of time. Um, this is from Ms. Carr. I know she may not be on. Hopefully she is. Mrs. Carr, do do we have programs that are very specific, like Title VI for African-American and Latinx students?
Um, under Title VI, we have, we serve American Indian um students. Um, I'm not aware there are any other specific program under any Title VI, Title I. So we can provide you that information. But at this point in our department, we only, under Title VI, we only serve American Indian kids, students. But in youth development, we do some targeted programming, which is for men, uh, men and women of color. Um, and we have a Men's Leadership Academy and Women's Leadership Academy that specifically target African-American students.
Um, yeah, I'd like to find out more about that.
Oh, sure.
Thank you. I'll contact you. I have her.
Fantastic. Thank you for all the questions. And I I just want to say again to staff, I know that this has not been an an easy job, and I just want you to know that we appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this for our students.
President Pritchett, if I could uh just ask Mr. Flores to go back, and I I'd like to make just one comment uh here at the end um to share uh the the slide with the graduation in A to G very quickly to close out this uh this presentation.
Sure.
And I'd like to tie it to uh the focus, the questions from some of you around uh assessments. So Mr. Flores? So uh, thank you for your acknowledgement of all of the work uh on uh from our staff here at Sac City Unified. Uh, what I do want to just uh point out to the board is that as we're seeing, you know, these steady upticks uh in graduation and A to G, for example, uh, let's not wait for us to hit a plateau uh where we stop seeing these uptick, uh, these upticks uh because of our inability to be able to intervene on behalf of our students based on our ability to access benchmark assessment data. Um, in other words, we are doing everything we can to make sure that our students are being placed in the right courses, to make sure that students are being intervened from a counseling, from a social and emotional perspective, all of those things that are important operationally, logistically, um organizationally. Uh, but let's not wait for us to see a plateau because we've maximized and become operationally as efficient on that, on on that uh type of work. Um, what we're going to need to do is make sure that we have access to information so that we can properly intervene and have more of our students, for example, come into their math or their English courses as ninth graders, where we always see very high D and F rates just because of the transition between middle school and high school. So to the extent that we can continue to stay committed to make sure that we're figuring out how to increase participation rates and benchmark assessments, for example, that will be the way in which we ensure that we don't plateau uh at the end of academic careers when we look at, for example, graduation and A to G rate. So um I just want to call on our community and our board to continue to focus on making sure that we don't hit a plateau because we've operationally become so efficient uh on uh how we place students, how we make sure that we have the right number of sections in courses at our high schools or at our middle schools, for example. But instead, that we're making sure that those upticks can continue because we have information available to us to make sure that we intervene as quickly as possible when students begin to show uh their struggles uh on an academic and social and emotional level. So uh, that's, I I just wanted to uh make that comment, President Pritchett.
Fantastic. Thank you for that. Well, this is a informational item. We will not be taking.
President Pritchett, I had raised my hand. Could I?
Oh, of course. I'm so sorry. Number shake, please. Go right ahead.
I do want to begin by concurring with the superintendent. Um, I'm happy to see the uptick, but uh that doesn't mean that we can be satisfied that, you know, 85% is still not where we want to be. Uh, similarly, there's so much unacceptable about what we've heard today. You know, it's a lot of incredible work on the behalf of these various district departments and teachers, and I'm incredibly grateful for that. Um, but I mean, 20% chronic absence, that's a fifth of our students, right? 11% of second graders are meeting the standard for phonics. Uh, that's an Ivy League acceptance rate. That's almost nobody. And even then, there's such a small selection size of, because we're not testing enough people. And the fact that there's an increase in D and F grades across the board, uh, except for this certain high school um levels, I I think, yes, uh, it's important to note that that's happening in LA and Fairfax and nationwide. But also, it's not something we can just accept as a product of distance learning. I see some of the successes we're noting today. Um, just learning hubs have led to 9% decrease in chronic absenteeism. We've had targeted on behalf of the attendance office, uh, the ELL rate for chronic uh significant disengagement was significantly re- uh reduced. So I'm hearing from Ms. Core about learning hubs, Ms. Kretschman about uh home visits, Ms. Flores about uh in-person interventions. Uh, and I think there's a common theme, uh, and that's that the stuff is not happening over Zoom. It's district staff doing incredible work of going out into the field and seeing people face to face. And I think the five additional learning hubs are an incredible step towards advancing more of the in-person. Uh, because I'm sick and tired of Zoom, and I know thousands and thousands of my peers are as well. Uh, and so as soon as we legally and possibly can, uh, especially for those K to three students who are missing out on phonics education, we really, really need to emphasize an option for in-person uh learning. And with that, let us move on to the next item.
Well said, District Member Shake. Thank you so much for sharing that. Um, okay, so uh item 7.4, before we move on to that, I just want to do a quick time check. We're running about an hour and 15 minutes behind schedule, so just kind of keeping in mind moving on. Okay, 7.4, Resolution Number 3178, prioritization of teachers and school staff for COVID-19 vaccine access. This will be brought to us by our First Vice President, Lisa Morowski, and Ms. Victoria Flores.
Thank you so much, President Pritchett. So I I, Member Shake, that was a perfect segue into kind of what we're, what we're talking about next. Um, so this is a really exciting thing to be able to talk about, um, and that is vaccines um that are being distributed now to healthcare workers and those in um congregate care facilities. That's sort of the first wave of the priority populations for the vaccine. So I I wanted to bring this forward uh to give the board an opportunity to to weigh in, um, hopefully with our support of prioritizing our teachers and our school staff uh for the next um, the next phase of vaccine prioritization. So um, I, you know, it's been reported that, you know, there is kind of a movement afoot now of school officials, state and local lawmakers across the country, as well as labor unions, that um, that teachers and school staff um really should have priority in the vaccine, uh, the vaccine distribution after, you know, the first uh phase. Um, so I just wanted to uh talk a little bit about the resolution and um give Victoria Flores a a chance to to give some perspective from the district as well. Um, so just first all, first off, I wanted to make sure that that we know that vaccination is one uh important addition of protection, a layer of protection um that would be great to have in place for our students and staff or for our teachers and staff. Kids are later, um, they're not, you know, they're not actually clinically approved for kids yet. But anyway, we'll get there. Um, but it's vaccination of of our teachers and staff will be great, but it's not by itself going to be enough. We still need to have our other public health protocols in place. Um, we know what those are, the testing, contact tracing, PPE, ventilation, sanitation, all of those things that the district's been really working hard um to to put in place. Um, I also wanted to be clear that, you know, I I believe and I hope that uh my fellow board members will join me in this, that, you know, it's really important to prioritize uh vaccinations this way. But it shouldn't be a barrier to reopening for in-person learning, particularly to reopen for the most academically, socially, and developmentally uh vulnerable students that that we're seeing. And we, I think we just talked quite a bit about that. We, you know, our, their needs remain, our moral obligations remain. And um when community rates are sufficiently low and other protocols in place, we should plan to reopen. Uh, but prioritizing vaccination for teachers and school staff will let us do what we all want to do, which is maximize the safety um for all of our employees who are serving our students. So uh quickly on kind of what's going on at the state level, there is a drafting guidelines work group, and there is a broad-based stakeholder community advisory committee on vaccine allocation that is advising this um, the smaller group that is actually drafting the guidelines. So the criteria they're using to decide on vaccine prioritization, it includes societal impact of the job, equity, impact on the economy, and occupational exposures. So just by those measures, by those metrics, I I think, you know, we have a very, very good case that um, you know, the societal impact, um equity, impact on the economy, and occupational exposures. Those are all things that um I think our teachers and school staff rank very, very highly on. So I uh really do hope that this is um going to, going to be kind of an immediate priority right after the first uh round. So the the initial uh doses are going out now. Essential workers are, so there's two phases in uh Phase One. There's like 1A, that's the high, um, really high-risk nursing homes, um, frontline healthcare workers. And after that is 1B, which is essential workers, which is a really, really large category. So what this resolution would say is, you know, let's prioritize within within the category of of putting our teachers and school staff first. So this would, um, this would cement the board's support for that and uh humbly ask for for your support. And I want to turn it over to Victoria Flores to add any comments from the district's perspective.
Thank you so much for it, Member Morowski. You you put it beautifully, and I I think our governor stated this when he talked about our stay-at-home order, that we want to see our schools open before our restaurants and our bars. And so this is, you know, having our our school staff um as protected as possible and hopefully our students. I will say, Student Board Member Shake, I believe you could get the vaccine. It is approved for 16 and o- and over. So we can, our juniors and seniors might be able to to meet that, meet that. But and we're hopeful that children will be on their way. I just wanted to share with the board and our community, we regularly meet with Sac County Public Health, their schools team, and their immunization team. And as we showed you tonight, we have a long history of partnering with them around vaccination, mostly flu vaccination, but we actually did partner with them back when H1N1 um hit. And and we're able to mass vaccinate, you know, at all of our schools, hold these these clinics in partnership. So we have this experience. We have school um, school nurses who are still serving on our staff, who were a part of those efforts. And so we have the institutional know-how and knowledge to do this. You know, as as um, as we're learning, this is going to take a bit longer. You have to give the shot, you have to watch folks. And then we know right now with the Moderna and the Pfizer vaccines, there's also a two-dose um requirement here. So, you know, we, this will take us some time, but we can get there. Um, we do have some plans, and we've discussed even internally how to prioritize even our own staff because I I believe we're looking at about 4,700-ish um people. And so those, those people who've been showing up every day, reporting every day and serving our students and families, and I'm thinking like our food service workers, our warehouse workers, our custodial staff, our school, you know, office staff who are are greeting and um helping our support staff and nurses who are out there, like Board Member Shake said, you know, interacting in in person with our families and then rolling that out so that we can pre- provide that safety net. I just want to also reinforce what Board Member Morowski said. She she talked about that Swiss cheese model of public health, and and this is a layer of cheese. We have to continue to practice face masking, physical distancing. And right now, for sure, please staying within our own household while we're experiencing this community spread. So we we wholeheartedly support this resolution and are grateful for Board Member Morowski for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Victoria. And, you know, this is, hopefully, if we, if we have priority for teachers and staff, we can just maximize the safety again and support a broader return to school with with all those safety protocols in place and this uh added layer of protection. So with that, I humbly ask for your support, fellow board members. Thank you. With that, I humbly ask for your support, fellow board members. Thank you.
Well said, member Morowski. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, there are two written public comments. And the first is from Dee McCollin and says, "I support SCUSD efforts in requesting State of California COVID vaccinations for teachers and school site staff." And the second comment is from Roe Gray and says, "I write in support of the push to urge state leaders to prioritize teachers and staff as the vaccine rolls out. It would be great if this is also supported by SETA or accompanied by other agreements with the labor partners about when reopening of schools at any level and in any form as dictated by the latest science can take place. Please keep pushing towards reopening." And that's the final public comment on this item.
Great, and do we have any board member comment on this item?
I'll move it.
Fantastic. Thank you, member Wu. Do I have a second? All right, I got a motion by member Wu and a second by member Phillips. All, a student preferential vote?
Before I give my student preferential vote, I'll just throw in a couple of comments. I want to thank Victorias or Ms. Flores and member Morowski for bringing this to us. You know, as I shared in my comments on the last item, the light at the end of the tunnel sort of is here. And I think we are, I mean, the sight of that light is sort of making us realize how horrible the tunnel itself is. But I'm really excited for us to specifically get these vaccines to our teachers. You know, every morning I wake up and think about the Emily Oster's study from Brown University that I mentioned in a couple of student member reports, which is that 0.13% of students in schools would spread virus, and 0.24% of staffs, the staff were double as likely, but still such a small number. And as Dr. Fauci regularly says, you know, we want to keep or get schools, or get kids into schools. And so I'm really glad that this very significant piece of Swiss cheese is being inserted. And so I'm excited for SCSD teachers to get vaccinated. And with that, I'll say aye.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And this will be a roll call vote. Superintendent?
Member Pritchett?
Absolutely, yes.
Member Morowski?
Hi.
Member Garcia?
Hi.
Member Villa?
Hi.
Member Rhodes?
Hi.
Member Wu?
Hi.
Member Phillips?
Hi.
Fantastic, and it passes. Congratulations. All right, we will move on to, oh, the comment.
We have four written public comments tonight. And the first is from David Fisher, President of the Sacramento City Teachers Association. And it says, "Good evening. I wanted to start by thanking the departing school members for their service. We especially want to welcome to SAC City new board members Phillips, Rhodes, and Villa. With three new, with three new board members, we have a tremendous opportunity to start a new chapter in SAC City history, one characterized by transparency, fiscal accountability, and a positive constructive working relationship between the district and certificated and classified staff. As we look towards the immediate future, we look forward to working with the district to develop a budget that makes the interests of students, particularly those with special needs, the district's highest priority. From our perspective, that begins with ensuring that every student has a fully credentialed, certificated teacher in the classroom as part of a teaching staff that reflects the diversity of, of our district. That also means a school board that acts with integrity and the highest ethical standards and sees the district's certificated and classified staff as those to work with rather than against. Toward that end, we invite this board to designate its own representative to be a part of the district's team when negotiations occur between the district and SETA, so that the elected officials who hold the ultimate decision-making authority in the district have one of their own to evaluate and report on what is happening, rather than simply relying on the district staff. In addition, as we look at models across the state where there is a positive constructive relationship between a school district and its union, the top administrators are directly involved in the active discussion with the district's employee organizations. Earlier this week, we along with 10 other CTA locals in Sacramento County held a community forum on safely reopening schools. Included in that forum was the President of the San Diego Education Association, the Vice President of the San Diego Unified School District School Board, and a representative from the University of California, San Diego. San Diego Unified is the second-largest school district in California and the 13th largest in the country, and yet their superintendent is directly involved in weekly meetings with the, with the Teachers Association and is a frequent participant in negotiations, as are members of their school board. Together, they have developed a state-of-the-art testing contact tracing, as well as the school environment projections, including ventilation and filtration systems that have resulted in a science-based agreement regarding in-person instruction. Just as importantly, in years past, they were able to navigate through a tough fiscal environment by working together, rather than trying to scapegoat the district's certificated staff. We all know that is not the case here, where our superintendent isolates himself, refusing even to return phone calls from our leaders and SEIU, and spends millions of dollars on outside attorneys and labor consultants, dollars that should be spent on our students. Today, the Sacramento City Unified School District has the highest reserve fund in its history, 93 million. Last year, it had an operating surplus of 23 million. In addition to the 93 million reserve fund, it even now has an additional 89 million tucked away in its books and supplies budget, approximately 78 million more than the district spends, or even intends to spend on books and supplies. There is an opportunity to come together to create a budget that meets the needs of our students and sets the foundation for improved services for students and student outcomes without having to be balanced on the backs of certificated and classified staff. With a new board, we have the ability to change the narrative that our district is fiscally mismanaged with the district and labor at loggerheads. We look forward to working with all of you to make SAC City the destination district in California, the district our students deserve. And the next public comment is from Julia Wilsey and says, "Please provide funding for LDV middle school programs. It is critical to our students." And the next public comment is from Dan Goulart and says, "I strongly object to the closure of the LDV middle school, and I urge you and your fellow council members to reconsider. I urge you, you to take the time to think about the massive impact the elimination of this program would be to the current students and the students who will not have the option to choose a middle school experience that does not try to assume that all kids are made the same. This quote, 'one size fits all' unquote concept is frighteningly tone deaf, as we know now more than ever before the effect a positive learning environment can have on the development of our kids. I urge you to think of all of us that voted for you and those that may not have in the hope that you will keep the best interests of your community as the first criteria as you make the terribly difficult choices you must make. I also strongly object to the proposed elimination of music. Both of our kids have enjoyed band for several years, and it is an invaluable part of a full education. Education is more than math and science and history. Those subjects, while critical, are perfectly balanced by music, theater, and art. I urge you to think of negative impact these cuts will have on hundreds of kids at LDV and thousands across the district. I do not envy the job you have, but it is the job you chose. I wish you much luck and strong voice, and I hope that my wishes are not in vain. Thank you for the consideration." And the final public comment is from JV Avalos and says, "I think it would help a lot of families if there was a, if there was a reduction, especially with COVID-19 coming along. A lot of people are struggling financially." And that's the final public comment.
Great. Thank you so much. We will move on to, at a 9.0 board workshop, strategic plan, and other initiatives. 9.1 suspend senior project graduation requirement of Board 6146.1 for the 2021 school year. Ms. Beata and Mr. Turkey?
Sorry, excuse me. Good evening again, Board President Pritchett, Superintendent, and members of the board. My name is Matt Turkey, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, and I'm here this evening to present to you on the recommendation to temporarily suspend the senior project as a graduation requirement for the graduating class of 2021. As laid out in Board Policy, the SCUSD graduation requirements are as follows. Forty credits, or four years, in English Language Arts. Twenty credits in math. Twenty credits in science. Forty credits in social studies. Ten credits in visual or performing arts. Twenty credits in PE. Ten credits in world languages. Sixty-five credits in electives. Proficiency in technology literacy. And finally, completion of a service learning project or senior project. Next slide, please. While each school has the autonomy to set the exact parameters of the senior project, there are several requirements which are common. Choosing a topic aligned to the career that a student is interested in pursuing. Completing a hands-on practical project and a related research paper. Engaging with a mentor with expertise in their field of interest. Engaging in some type of practical application, internship, or community service hours. And finally, participating in a defensive learning judged by a panel of community members and staff. So for example, if a student is interested in a career in mechanical engineering, they may choose to solve some kind of problem using the engineering design process, and actually design, build, and test out a product. They would need to identify and engage with a professional mentor with expertise in mechanical engineering who would guide them along the way. They would also engage in some kind of community service. Finally, the students would then present and defend their project and their learning to a panel of community and staff members. Next slide, please. Since the onset of the coronavirus pandemic, we've been hearing about the increased levels of stress which both students and staff are under. We also know that many of our most vulnerable families have endured disproportionate hardship with the loss of jobs, reduced income, and a myriad of other issues brought on by the pandemic. Many of the regular components of the senior project, such as community service, internships, finding a professional mentor, and participating in a defense of learning have become exponentially much more difficult under our current conditions. Conditions which neither we, our families, nor our students have any control over. Under these extenuating circumstances, we cannot allow our students to fail to graduate due to an inability to complete the senior project requirement. Next slide, please. As we know, every system is perfectly designed to get the results that it gets. If we do not act now to suspend the senior project requirement for the graduating class of 2021, we will create more inequities within our system. The students most likely to fail to graduate because of non-completion of the senior project are likely to be the very same students who have been disproportionately affected by the ravages of this pandemic. As we continue that our system, sorry, as we recognize that our system is inequitable by design, this is our opportunity to interrupt a looming inequity so that all students can be given an equal opportunity to graduate. Next slide, please. If the suspension of the senior project is approved by the board this evening, our next steps will be to communicate this to our high school principals and staff and the students and the families of the graduating class of 2021. Next slide, please. As such, it is recommended that the board temporarily suspend the senior project as a graduation requirement for the 2020-21 school year. And last slide, thank you so much. That is the end of the presentation, and I'll be available for any questions, should the board have any.
Great. Do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Great. I would just like to say I asked for this to be brought to the, to the board. I received many, many calls throughout the community, and, you know, this is just one more barrier for our students during, during the midst of a pandemic that could potentially hurt their graduation. And coming from a parent who, both of my kids graduated from SAC City schools, both of them had to do a senior project, I understand that the senior practices, it brings them out of their comfort zone and shows them new ways of doing things. And so it's unfortunate that we're, with the pandemic, that we're, we're up against these barriers. So, you know, with, with that, I will move to, to approve the suspension. Is there any other board member comments or questions? Member Garcia?
Yes, thank you. I'll, I'll go ahead and second that motion. I did have a question about the high school graduation requirements, the list of all the credits that you need. I'm wondering, since President Pritchett requested that this particular item be brought before the board, was there an analysis in terms of what other requirements may be at this point? You know, students may be unable to, to complete because of, of everything that we're going through. So, so I just wanted to know if there was an overall analysis made on the other requirements?
Sure, so if Mr. Flores could just briefly show that slide, perhaps? Okay, so all of 1 through 8 there, these are all courses which are regularly taken by all students, and many of which, most of which are also needed for A through G. So these would not be anything which we would pull from being a graduation requirement. Number nine, the proficiency in technology literacy is one which during this pandemic, really, all students are showing technology literacy as they engage in distance learning, and this may well be something brought to the board in the future around what this actually means. Because proficiency in technology literacy is actually embedded within the Common Core, within Common Core Math, within Common Core Literacy, and across all subjects, it is actually embedded. So the question about whether it's needed as a high school graduation requirement, I think, is another question. But the one which really stood out under analysis was the service learning project or senior project, which would be, as, as you, as Board President said, you know, an unnecessary barrier, and it leaves schools basically in the situation of either making the senior project much, much less meaningful by taking away those things which students would normally do to make it doable, but then it just becomes a boxed check, right? Or you keep it at the same level, and then there's just so many barriers within the, the pandemic, which it makes it virtually impossible for many students to do.
Thank you. I appreciate your response.
Thank you. Are there any other board member comments or questions? Member Morowski, and then member Villa?
Thank you. I'm, I'm actually just curious, are there, are there students who would graduate but for the senior project in a normal year? Or is that, is that a significant problem?
I don't have any numbers, but I can tell you that as a principal of a high school, we would go through iterations with students where there would be a certain level which they had to reach. And if they didn't reach that level, they would not be on for graduation. And generally, students would then, if a student was in that situation, would need to redo their presentation and re-defend their, their senior project. So it's, I mean, in answer to your question, it's a real thing, yes.
Well, it, it just pains me to have to consider this. I mean, I think it's appropriate, given the circumstances, but, and I know it's a bear, but it's, it seems like something that students get a lot out of. I'm curious if member Shayk has anything to add from his, the student's perspective. It's not to put you on the spot, but...
Well, I wasn't going to say anything, but Minnick was just texting me saying that you should do one regardless, and I will be doing one regardless. But I definitely think that to go out and do this level of community work while we're, you know, chained to our desks essentially, stuck inside at home, it's unreasonable, and for that to be a block of graduation is not something that we can ask this year. And so I support the motion.
Thank you. And that brings up the question I have from Mr. Turkey. I know that there are, are students, and I'm sorry, my internet's saying it's unstable. I know that there are, are, um, student, and I'm sorry, my internet's saying it's unstable. So hopefully you can hear me okay. Um, there, I know that there are students that have already began working on their senior project. In fact, some of them may have been working on it since last year when knowing that this was coming up. So I'm wondering if, um, in fact, we could work out something with our, like, if you could encourage just the sites to possibly give extra credit for the students that have completed it, um, even though it's not a graduation requirement.
So, um, uh, Mr. Chad Schweitzer and Mary Harden Young and myself actually recently met with high school principals about this very topic. And, uh, high school principals were saying the exact same thing a- a- as you. And, um, basically they were saying that what they would do is to make it an assignment for students. Now, if students have not started that assignment, they would be held harmless. Okay? However, for students which have completed it, it would be an assignment which could be worth some credit for students who have, um, already done that.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Thank you for considering that. I think I saw Mr. and Ms. Member Villa's hand up.
Uh, I just wanted to thank you, Board President Pritchett, for bringing this, um, up because it's something that, you know, we did hear from a lot of students this week, um, the student listening session. And they're overwhelmed and I think this is a great, um, thing to offer to them because many of them are already challenged with the work that's on their plate. And I think it's really protective of their mental health and, um, just the space that they're in. So I appreciate you, um, moving forward with this.
Absolutely. Thank you. Do we have any other board member, uh, member Marowski, do you have your hand up? I'm sorry.
Yeah, just to, just to quickly, I mean, I, I, I would like to, I don't know, I don't want to put more work on staff. I'm wondering if there's a way that we can bring, bring back or recognize the students who, who choose to complete the, the senior project. Um, because I, you know, it is, it is, it is a big deal. And if, whether they're working on it or not now, you know, if, if we can encourage it, um, if they can do it, you know, I would just like to be able to recognize them. So maybe take a certificate or something. I, I don't know. If that's, if that's too much, I, I understand as well, but just something that maybe you can take back.
I think that's a great recommendation.
Member Marowski, if, if we could come back, um, just give us a little bit to kind of just assess how we create a, a balanced approach, um, in not doing something that might feel like students want to do it, even though they might not be able to do it, but still acknowledging that some students also have started and might, might be in a position where they're in a better position to, to complete it. Um, i- if you're wondering, this was a situation that we faced last year with our school closures occurring in March. Students were much closer to completing it and we did make the difficult decision. We came to the board, uh, for the same reason. Um, so, so let us work with our principals and get a better of a, a better assessment of, of, of what that rate of student completion might be, um, and, and figure out if, if we can create a balanced approach to it um, and, and, and come back to you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other board member comments or suggestions? No? Okay. Uh, well, we have a, uh, motion and a second on the table. This is a roll call vote, but first we will do student member, um, preferential vote.
Thank you, President Pritchett. Aye.
Great. And Superintendent, roll call?
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Marowski?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Wu?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for your support on that. Um, item ten-point-O consent agenda, can I get a motion to?
So move.
Thank you. Got a motion in a second and this is also student preferential vote?
Yes, on all open session items.
Thank you. Roll call vote, Superintendent?
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Marowski?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Wu?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Fantastic. All right. Eleven, uh, um, item eleven-point-O future board meetings and dates, January fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one, four-thirty closed sessions, six P M. Open session. And February, the following, February fourth, twenty-twenty-one and four-thirty closed session, six o'clock P M. Open session. Um, with that, I would just like to say happy holidays to everyone before we close this meeting. And it's so wonderful, um, to, and I'm looking forward to the work to be done with you. And I hope that all of our students, family, families, community members and our staff have a wonderful and restful, much-needed winter break. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I got a motion and a second.
I hope everybody has a safe and healthy holiday.
Thank you. And we're expecting, uh, truffles, member Wu. All right, I got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, board members.
Have a good evening.